Call to order, the August 8th meeting of the Harris Township Board of Supervisors. Please join me in this pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
First item of business, second item of business, is the minutes from the July 11th public hearing and July 11th regular meeting.
So moved, sir.
Amendments, corrections, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose, no. Citizen comments, now is an opportunity for anybody who would like to make a comment for an item not on the agenda. Don't see, not seeing any? We'll move on to new agenda items. The state requires us to identify anything that we're going to add to the agenda at the beginning of the meeting so people don't know, know not to duck out early. Yes, sir.
I'd like to add an item regarding speed enforcement on Brush Valley Road. About 10 days ago, we were very close to a pickup truck and bicycles colliding in front of my house about 7:15 in the morning, so we need to get some patrol out there. They are now patrolling Brush Valley and College Township to shift it into Harris.
Okay.
I have two things that I don't need, two things that we can discuss later, but they don't, they don't need to be on the agenda because we're not going to vote on them, but two, two items for discussion later.
Okay, we'll hold that, the reports and such.
Yes.
Let's, I had the Brush Valley Road.
Why don't you just add it to the manager's report?
Okay, that sounds good.
Is it going to require a vote?
No, you can give me.
It will be, it will be discussed.
Yeah.
All right.
You can just give me directions.
We can vote anytime we want. All right, township business, first item is a presentation of the Spring Creek Watershed Mentor Award to Supervisor Haymeister.
We have some representatives here to present him with the award, so go ahead, Paul.
Hello, everyone, for those of you who may be watching or don't know, my name's Paul Takeak, I'm on college township council, and I also currently serve as Chair of the Spring Creek Watershed Commission. I'm actually joined by Dr. Bob Carline this evening as well, he's Chair of the Spring Creek Atlas Work Group. So, I just wanted to take a minute of your time, thank you for the opportunity. For those of you who don't know, the Spring Creek Watershed Commission is an organization comprised of 12 municipalities that cover the, the Spring Creek Watershed. And for many years, a lot of work has been done by folks in this area. And earlier this year, we decided that it was far past time to honor some of the folks who have done the work on behalf of, of the residents and communities in the Spring Creek Watershed. So, the Spring Creek Watershed Atlas Group, operating under the auspices of the Watershed Commission, assembled a list of individuals who made significant contributions to the management and conservation of water resources in the Spring Creek Watershed. And the Commission went ahead and established an award called the Spring Creek Watershed Mentor Award. These are individuals who are not necessarily water resource professionals, but they're volunteers, they've devoted many, many hours of their time to protecting our treasured resources. Some are professionals who've gone well beyond the scope of their professional duties, but many are interested community members and others who, who simply volunteered their time. The citizens of the Spring Creek Watershed are indebted to all of these individuals for their tireless efforts to conserve our watershed. I want to read of the, just a bit of the nomination of Denny Haymeister to, to this. He is the former longtime Chair of the Spring Creek Watershed Commission, of which I, I told you I now serve, he serves on the Harris Township Board of Supervisors. He, while Chair of the Spring Creek Watershed, he helped create the Spring Creek Watershed Storm Water Management Plan and Ordinance, which was adopted by each of the 14 municipalities within the watershed, which, as you all know, is quite an accomplishment. The Spring Creek Watershed Storm Water Ordinance was later used throughout Pennsylvania as a model ordinance. The effort eventually led to recognizing the importance of municipal cooperation and planning on a watershed basis. He remained Chair of the Spring Creek Watershed Commission until 2020, just in time for me to join the Commission, he knew when to get now it was good. And he volunteers for both Clearwater and the Spring Creek Chapter of Trout Unlimited. As, he has been a real champion for our community and, and for the watershed in particular, so I don't know if you have anything else to add? All right, but on behalf of the Spring Creek Watershed Commission and the Spring Creek Watershed Atlas Work Group, I would like to present the Spring Creek Watershed Mentor Award to Denny Haymeister.
Denny?
Oh, sorry.
Congratulations.
You look a little blue.
Come up in front of the microphone, Denny.
If you just sit on here.
Yeah, there you go. Ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Another camera. Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you for everything that you've done.
All right, well, thank you. Congratulations. Next item of business is Proposed Ordinance 355, Amending the On-Lot Sewer Disposal Ordinance to allow for non-building waivers.
That would be Mr. Mark.
All right, so the Planning Commission's 2022 Work Plan included a process to consider waivers to the sewage management planning requirements. Commission began working on this item back in 2021, but had to postpone their work due to discussions related to the rural zoning update. At their meeting back on, in June of this year, the Commission resumed discussing this issue, which would ultimately amend the sewage management program in order to define situations when a sewage planning waiver would be appropriate. This discussion occurred at the recommendation of the Department of Environmental Protection and the Township Solicitor after the Board of Supervisors had approved a request for a planning waiver and non-building declaration for the Bickle subdivision in February of 2021, which had subdivided a 220-acre parcel into two equally sized lots. The Township Subdivision and Land Development Ordinance, as well as the Sewage Management Ordinance, require primary and secondary absorption areas to be identified for all subdivision plans outside of the sewer service area. The requirement is consistent with the municipality's planning code as well as the Sewage Facilities Act. So the Planning Commission reviewed a proposed amendment to Chapter 9, which is the Sewers Chapter of your ordinance, that would provide criteria for when a planning waiver would be acceptable. The proposed amendment states that waivers would only be acceptable for subdivisions or land developments that will result in the creation of a lot or lots that will be used for non-sewage generating uses, such as water storage tanks, wireless communication facilities, sewer, sewage pump stations, stormwater facilities, or airport runway extensions.
Which one are you at?
I'm not looking at the ordinance currently, I'm, I'm on the agenda at this time. These examples that were included, though, in the draft ordinance were taken directly from the DEP waiver form. The ordinance would also require the submission of the required DEP form and a note on the plan, and property deeds notifying future property owners that there was no sewage planning conducted on the property. So, some of the benefits to this are just that in the future, a, a property owner, if they want to subdivide their land and they're interested in not doing sewage planning, this would give them clear understandings of when sewage planning can be waived and when it can't, it just provides some structure. Right now, the, the subdivision and land development ordinance, it includes waiver criteria, but the Sewers Chapter, the Sewers Chapter does not, so this way it kind of takes care of ensuring that, since it's required in two separate sections of the ordinance, you have consistent requirements as for when a waiver can be approved. To your question, Mr. Graham, it's located under K1.
Okay.
Right around the middle of the.
Yeah, I see it.
Yep, that's, that's where it defines where a, where a waiver would be acceptable. So, Planning Commission recommended approval of this proposed amendment at their meeting back in June, and forwarded it to the Board for potential action. So tonight, we're asking the Board review the proposed amendments, determine if there's any changes necessary. If you're generally satisfied with the ordinance as presented, you could move to schedule a public hearing and possible adoption for your September 12th, 2022 meeting.
I make that note and put that on public, for a public hearing, ordinance number 355 for the September meeting.
All right, there we go. So, thoughts, discussion?
I guess, well, I, I guess this does originate from our discussion with Bickle's Lot, right? Because we gave him, I guess, maybe we weren't allowed to, we gave him a, a waiver not to put, do the sewers because he's only using for farming. And that, that's, this, this, it will make it, what, right what we did, I guess.
I think, like I mentioned, it gives kind of direction to anybody in the future, if they were to come in and they're planning on, I just don't want to do sewage planning now, but I totally intend to build a house here in the future, you need to do sewage planning. It's, that's not an appropriate time to waive, is, is, you know, if you just are thinking, you want to postpone it, you know?
Okay, but, no, his reason was that he was never going to use that land for anything but farming, that was his, at that time. And so he didn't want to go to spend the thousands of dollars it would have taken to do this, I don't know how much, but I'm guessing, thousands of dollars to do this for no reason. And then, but, also, there's going to be something on a deed that soon, if something happens 20, 30 years from now, there's no, they have to come back and do that.
Yeah, one, one of the concerns I think we had as staff back in February of last year was that it relies a lot upon staff to remember who was given a waiver. In the future, if someone comes in to build a house on Mr. Bickle's property, they may not be aware that the plan was waived, that there, there was sewage plan waived.
But they would still have to do it.
They would still have to do it, but it, it's important that there's more ways of notifying them, that way staff will just not be able to remember every situation where one may have been given.
Well, I'm sure you won't.
That's item K4.
Correct, yes.
Does this only apply to Harris, we do not need any cog discussion? Our 537 plan, nothing is, nothing's touched because of this?
No, the, the 537 plan outlines that every municipality is going to have a sewage planning ordinance, which you do, and it's consistent, there's nothing inconsistent about having these criteria, the Solicitor had weighed in before and said, even with the 537 plan, you can still give a waiver, it was just beneficial to have criteria, but it's, it's an individual municipal decision to, to do so.
So it's a much speedier approach doing this than having to go to the same region?
Correct.
We can do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, I, I'm pleased the Planning Commission decided to look into this because when Mr. Bickle came in for that waiver request, it just seemed ridiculous, they'd have to spend all that money when he wasn't planning on building anything and he was just planning on farming it. And the fact that, you know, you're, the issue, the only issue I saw was making sure there was a note on the deed, which this accomplishes, so I'm, I'm very pleased this worked out.
Seems logical to me. Anything further? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. It's on the schedule. Okay. 2023 Cog Program Plan and Capital Improvement Plan.
So we did something a little different, because this typically is the agenda item that takes the longest this time of year. We compiled, I compiled the comments that were received from Denny, Bruce, and Frank, and then included my comments as well. Mr. Vigilone is here, I did provide the comments to Mr. Vigilone and Mr. Norenberg ahead of time. And what we need to do tonight is to finalize what our official comments from the township will be, and then I can get them back to the cog on the next day or so. So, Mr. Vigilone, if you want to.
Yeah, no, actually, actually, let's have.
If you want to come, sit next to me.
There you go.
The hot seat.
That'll just make it, make it goes.
Thank you.
So yeah, so let's work our way through it. So just starting on the first item, observing June 19th. And Denny said, not a bad idea, Frank said, we already, let's combine with some other holidays. I'm kind of in favor, I'll, 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 well, let's go around the table.
Well, I, I didn't, my comments aren't it because I'm waiting to see what I take back to, to the, on any of these, what we take back to our, our finance committee meeting on the 18th. So, but, but on this first one, I, it's interesting. First off, I don't necessarily think I'm in favor of, of being a national holiday. It's certainly good, something we should celebrate, there's no doubt about it, but I don't know that it rises to the holiday, i- if that's the case, then St. Gennaro probably should for our Italian friends, or, or, or St. Patrick's Day for our Irish friends. I mean, I know it's being facetious, but it's the same thing to me, and it's something to celebrate, but I was curious, how much a holiday costs us? And Joe was kind enough to come up with a figure of five, what was it?
Twenty-two thousand.
Huh? Five thou, a day, per day?
For a working day.
Sell almost $6,000 a day.
No, 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 $22,000 a day, right, wasn't it?
That was full-time salary.
Yeah.
Yes, full-time salary, $22,000 a day, yes, is what, what a day off cost us. That's, I don't know if that's important or not, but I was interested to know what our holidays cost us, so, yeah, I'm, I'm not opposed, I'm celebrating it, no doubt about it, but I'm not quite sure that, I don't know what, what criteria for a national holiday is, I don't know, but I don't think this quite rises to that.
Just, we're not talking about a national holiday, we're talking about.
Well, it's giving days off and, yeah, well, the other, the other thing is, I, if, I think that a more appropriate celebration would be July 1st, or July 3rd, when the Emancipation Proclamation was signed, or, or May, May 13th, whenever the, the war was over. Those days may be as important if you're going to celebrate the freedom, freedom of, of slaves, that might be a more important day, so I'm, I'm not really in favor of a day off there.
Let's continue on, Nigel, your thoughts?
Well, yeah, I mean, how many national holidays can we have? Maybe we could trade it for another one, like Columbus Day, which really shouldn't be a national holiday, in my opinion, but no. Anyway, so, yeah, I mean, there's so many days to celebrate for so many reasons, and I think that that cost is, is a little, a little much, especially since, you know, if it was a federally recognized national holiday, perhaps, but since we would be, we would be spearheading this movement, basically, I don't know how many, if there's, this has moved on to that level in other areas, I, I, I think it's a little much.
Denny?
I'll share my comment, I go the other way.
Okay. Frank?
Yeah, I, I pretty much said that, you know, I, I remember when we used to celebrate Washington's birthday, Lincoln's birthday, and, you know, then when Kennedy was shot, they wanted to have Kennedy's birthday, and it got to the point where it was going to be so many, we made it President's Day. So now we have President's Day, and, and I see the same basic thing here, every time a new date comes up, you know, we're going to add another holiday, and we're going to have more holidays, and we're going to have workdays, so I would be in favor of one general holiday for whatever it would be, and if, if they want to combine this one with Martin Luther King Day, or the end of the war, or whatever, but make one day a holiday, whether, whatever day it is, not two or three.
I think, I'm fortunate Lincoln and Washington's birthdays are relatively close together, so it's kind of easy to compromise on, on compromising on that one. You know, whereas Martin Luther King Day is a pretty wide, pretty wide gap. What I'm hearing here is that we're kind of, let me, let me say, let me propose this, that we suggest that the cog organize a celebration on that day, but not have it as a holiday for all in cog employees. How does that sound to people?
Internal kind of?
Well, no, cog is a regional celebration, we could do something in the parks, we could, we could work with the borough, we could do something.
I would say pick one of those three dates that I had, the Emancipation Proclamation, the end of the war.
Yeah, but I don't think we need to take a day off.
No.
What I'm hearing is, I don't, is, we're not really enthusiastic about taking a day off, but I think it's, it's, it is the day that is being adopted as a celebration of the cessation of enslavement.
In Texas.
And so.
In Texas.
Yeah, but that's, that's the, that's the one that people are, are gathering around, so that's my suggestion, is let's celebrate it, but not give everybody a day off work.
For Juneteenth celebrations, but not have it as a paid holiday.
Is that, is that?
That's right.
We, we, we. Okay.
Should definitely be recognized.
Okay. God, I like consensus. Okay. Should cog prioritize development of a long-range 20, 25 years facility plan? Denny said yes, Frank said yes, but it should be separate from other projects that are already funded on their other programs. And my comment was 10 years seems a lot more reasonable, a lot can change in 20 to 25 years, so, Denny, Bud, we haven't heard from you?
Well, I agree with that, so that's, that's, that's what I'll take back to the, you'll send that comment in and.
What comment am I sending in?
But, for, option, for, what, what are we talking about now?
Well.
We're, we're discussing number two.
Yes, I said, but the comments are here, are, yes.
Well, we're making one general comment from the township, so that's what Bruce is trying to work on.
Okay, we can't, well.
I would support, I would support the change to 10 years. 20, 25 years, economically, things can change drastically.
I think 10 years is more realistic.
Well, I think we're looking at 5% or really at 5%.
Okay, I'm, I'm the, I'm the, the guru, because this is part of my Baby on Facilities Committee. And what we were after, the goal we were after here, was that when it came time for budget every year, we knew how much we had to maintain our properties, and that was this goal. But when they printed it and put it out to everybody, they included Whitehall Regional Park, so the numbers are huge, but that's not what we need to maintain our projects. So we were looking at something that, okay, in year five, we're going to have to put a roof on here, so we knew what we had to budget from a year-to-year basis, so I would like it to be that. I don't want to have, like, Whitehall Regional Park where we borrowed $10 million to, to do that, and that's going to show up in those numbers. No, that's a separate thing, it's a project over here. This should be for planning purposes only. There should be a, a number that we can look a year, two, three, maybe five years down the road, that says, and 10's fine with me, that, that says, this is what money, it's coming up that we're going to have to spend on facilities.
So you're saying we should separate the stuff that we've already committed to.
Pretty much, yeah, like, like the major project.
Okay, and then for the remaining stuff, look at a 10-year planning horizon?
Right.
Are we all good on that?
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay. CAP was changed from a funding document to an expenditure base. I was like, yeah. Comments?
No comment.
That's good.
No comment.
Keep moving.
We're good with that?
Yeah.
No, okay. All right, page two. Cog Compensation Program Provides for a Cost of Living Adjustment and Annual Merit Increase of 1.5. The, using the formula, the budget would be approximately 7.2, HR has suggested 5%. And we have the staffing study hanging over our heads in the background. Thoughts? Hey, anybody want to go first?
Okay, I'll go first, because I wrote a big comment. Well, the, the only thing I would say is, it, it seems like every year, this, this is becoming a rubber stamp, so to speak, it's, you know, everybody's going to get it, we, and the merit, merits aren't really, I mean, everybody gets a merit. I happen to think that if you give everybody the same amount every year, you lose good employees, because they're sitting there going, you know, I'm doing a great job, I'm doing a better job than these guys, and I get the same as them, why am I doing this? I would sooner, if, and, and that's my comment, i- if management would sit down and make this meaningful, that people, it's not, it's not going to be guaranteed every year, even if we pass it every year, they don't have to guarantee, give it out. We need to make sure that, that we're encouraging our good employees, and, and I don't want to say penalizing, but making sure that, that the mediocre and the ones that aren't up to snuff, aren't getting the same thing that our great employees are. That's my concern.
Let's continue on, comment?
Oh, well, I, I'm just listening to this, I, I, yes, I, I think we have to be careful here. I suggested before, but maybe we'll look at it at our meeting, come up, that, that we make a smaller COLA and a larger, a larger incentive to, to award someone that is working, but still keep up with the rest of the, rest of the world, so I don't know what that number's going to be. I hate to, we, with so many years, we have, I would say, not shorted our, our employees in the cog, but we've given them less a percentage than, than the rest of the municipalities gotten because of the budget constraints, and, and our, our manager did very well, the cog manager did very well, but I think that we need to look at it, and I don't know how it's going to be, play out, what, what the end of COLA is going to be, but, but I think we have to make sure that everybody's wages today are the same as they were next year, last year, but maybe put a larger incentive if you have a good employee.
Denny, thoughts?
I left the 5% was it?
All right, Nigel?
Yeah, well, when we discussed this in HR, bounced it around, and we didn't want to go above the 5% this coming year, because hopefully this is a temporary trend and nobody else is getting anything like that. But I, and I think the merit range we have is really sufficient to reward employees that are, you know, stepping up and doing above and beyond, so I'm, I'm comfortable with the way it is.
All right, I, I have to say that, I mean, the Larnes Employer in the, in the county is giving 2.5%. And I wish they'd give me 5. I, I like, I, I appreciate Frank's comments a lot, that if everybody gets a merit raise, it's not a merit raise, it's just a tack on to the COLA. And so that, that, I, I think, we'd be in agreement as one part of our suggestion that merit raises should, should be based upon an objective evaluation and not be across the board.
That's meant.
They are supposed to be.
Yes, it's meant.
But that's not the way it works, is it?
I don't.
Okay, well, let's emphasize, it's our preference then. On the 5%, what did we think?
What was the consensus, I didn't hear that.
I, I didn't, I didn't see, hear a consensus.
I didn't even say anything on the percentage, I just said on the overall, so I.
Well, we'd like to, I typically would like to keep it on a par with all municipalities, I don't know what they're doing yet, we don't, we don't. None of us know, so, but I, I guess maybe, I, I agree, 8% would be a little bit high, be a nice one, but then maybe, I, I don't know, I guess, I, my opinion is, let's leave that open for discussion, wherever meetings, we'll see what the consensus there is.
I think maybe the suggestion should be, and I was talking about. I think maybe the suggestion should be, and I was talking about this here internally. You know, the inflation is going to be a killer for everybody, right? But we can't necessarily give our employees seven or eight percent raises plus one and a half percent merit on top of that. So one of the things I've been kicking around is looking at how we can use, and the cog has a health insurance reserve fund policy, using that to help offset some of the costs employees are paying. So their health insurance goes up, but then the cog pays a little more into that for them, but maybe only give them four to five percent as a COLA raise, and then up to one and a half percent for merit. Just looking at other ways to kind of make up that difference for this year.
I think what we're making a general comment here that I'm hearing is, this needs work. You know, I don't think any of us are comfortable with everything that's here. I think we need to say, like, somebody said, well, let's see what the percentage is. I think, I think HR and, you know, the, the finance committee need to.
Well, I, I think the finance committee, past years have, have more or less waited to see what municipalities are doing. And either equal that, or maybe trying to cut up a little.
Well, that's, my, my point is this needs work. I don't think that we, I, I don't know, is everybody else comfortable with something that would.
It'd have been a catchaway too, if that, if that's the case.
Just, um, when we discussed it at HR, we did have last year's increases from all the municipalities. And five percent really is, you know, even for this year, isn't out of line for what municipalities have been giving in raises. So I, I think, I'm comfortable.
With five?
With five, yes, for this year.
Yep.
And it's, you know, it's in the HR plan, and you know, you know, we're, we're just starting out a wage and benefit survey, so we'll see what happens from, from that.
What did, what did the county do? We haven't heard. They haven't got their report yet, have they?
Well, five percent is certainly less than what the COLA is currently. And we do have our, um, our study compensation, classification compensation study, and we can, you know, we, we have next year too. It doesn't have to all be done at one. And so am I, is everybody comfortable with, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm not hearing a consensus yet.
I, I'm going to present it, that, that we, we're comfortable with five, let's, let's, if there's a recommendation either way, let's put an argument up and see how that flies.
Okay, everybody? All right, good, we good? Okay, office administration contingency budget. This was just a note, it didn't really ask for, um, more classified compensations, I mean, anything? Any comments?
No.
Nope.
Not much, not much.
So, yeah, I, I bet it's a big place, and okay, noted, noted is a good comment.
I like noted, thanks, that's better than no comment.
Assistant with the facility, facilities committee approved facility condition assessment. Twenty-five grand is planned to be budgeted to complete repairs and maintenance of the exterior of the cog building. Danny comments, important to maintain our physical plant. Frank had no comment. I was like, okay.
No comment.
Any thought?
Noted.
Noted.
Pay the bill.
Is the main particular target looked at, Joe, with respect to that, that general phase, phrase, I mean, are we looking at a serious issue coming up, or is this a proactive kind of approach?
It's, it's a little both.
Okay.
It, I mean, we did have some issues, but we are looking at a proactive report. This is part of what we, the assessments that we've done.
Okay.
That we need to do this every so many years, or it's going to get real expensive, so that's really something that's planned.
You don't want things to creep up on you.
Yeah, and one of, if you think about the, uh, start of the facilities committee, one of the big things was, you know, it was 2018 when we started that, and we were hearing the new library, the new cog building, the new pools, well, they were ten to fifteen years old. They aren't new anymore, we've got to start thinking about planned obsolescence and funding the obsolescence of those. And, you know, the obsolescence would be a, you know, heating unit, a roof, you know, and different things. So we don't want to be surprising municipalities all of a sudden saying, oh, yeah, we need a new roof and a new boiler and a new generator, so here's a price tag for you.
All the same, they're all middle-aged now.
Exactly.
Well, we've done some, yeah, we've done some major things with that building. We, the windows were all refurbished and, and redone, so, you know, we've done a lot over the years with a little bit each year, instead of trying to do it all at once.
Okay. Next item, should fifteen thousand be budgeted in 2023 to purchase a replacement projector for the general forum room? Uh, just as a clarification, Halt is the current projector?
Um, we have two projectors, so the one was purchased in twenty, for replacement this year. And then the second one is, I can't get you exact, but it's within a year of 2013, I think. And they both are, um, recommended for replacement, and there's issues with it in terms of the throw that, where they're mounted to catch the.
All right, so we have a, we have a nine-year-old one, and the other one is?
No.
And we have a problem with that?
The ten-year-old one is failing, just like, just like the new, we replaced the new one becau-.
Oh, we have replaced the new one. Now we have an additional one, okay, so we're, um, do they really cost that much money?
For these ones, because of where they are with the throw, they do with the mount, and how they're mounted on the wall.
That just seems like a lot of money.
Okay.
What's, what's the word?
Well, you saw what I said, let's go back to meeting in person, we wouldn't need.
Well, the, no, the projector is, I, no, yes, when I first saw this, I thought, let's, let's, but this is one meeting in person, we need a projector for that, right? Yeah.
Yeah, well, and they also benefit our, our residents, being able to watch the meetings and, and, you know.
The projectors do not.
And I just want to also say, with these projectors, they come out of the cog building fund, which is based upon allocation of square footage within the building. So about half, maybe a little more of this fifteen thousand dollar projector, we paid for by code and regional refuse funds. And so it'd be about eight thousand, I would say, I didn't look at the exact numbers, I'd say eight thousand from the code and refuse and seven thousand from the municipalities.
Anybody check to this going forward?
I, I think we need to keep that meeting up, we need to do other things in there too, getting some acoustics problems, but that's beside the point.
Okay, so we're in agreement?
Yes, okay.
So, agree.
Okay. Should staff revert the employee, employer, employee insurance reserve split back to eighty, ten, ten from seventy-nine, nine, twelve? Let's, let's ask Nigel first.
I have no idea.
All right, put that down.
Pretty minor number changes, and, you know, wow.
Any, any objections to that?
I was going to put no idea there, but that, I have, okay.
All right, okay, I think we're going along there. Should twenty-five thousand be budgeted in 2023 to start converting the new construction project documents to electronic format for larger facilities? Danny will change, say, money in the end. Frank needs, says needs to be done sooner or later, maybe over several years. My thought is this going to impact program, permit fees, because code kind of funds themselves, but we ought to be concerned about the impact on, on program fees. And our manager wanted to know, what's the plan to reduce the fund balance?
Well, my first comment is here, why is this additional plan for that thousand, why isn't that in our already lasered project or whatever we're doing? I mean, I'm, we're, we're seem to be having trouble with their, with code and, and their, their IT, and it's, it's always behind the schedule, it's always behind, uh, behind the eight ball. What, I, I thought we were going to get caught up with it on this time, but probably not. We don't know that, right?
I'm not going into depth on this, this would be a Walt question, it's a little further than I can.
That's, that's, well, I guess the committee asked that, Walt, what, what is going on here? I don't know, it's confusing to me. We did, you never can ever get a good IT program or anything for the, for the code, it always seems to be, have a problem. The last seven million dollars we blew twenty years ago, fifteen years ago.
All right, can that make sense?
Sure.
Can we lump all the code stuff together since they pay for their own, but I think we have some comments on it, just comment in general? Because if you read them, they're all basically, they, they want about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars here to do stuff, but I think it all comes into the same, uh, when you start talking about it, it comes out the same reason, like, ten iPads are protected, I mean, come on.
Yeah, I mean, my comment for this group was, will it impact permit fees?
Yeah, well, that's the other part, that they're, they, they said that, if, if you remember a few years back, code came to us, and we, we had the question of why was their fund balance so high? I think at that time it was around four million dollars. And we said, why is it four million dollars? And the answer we got was, well, we take the permit money now, but we have to do the inspections in the future, and that money is there for the inspections in the future. Well, last year, that fund started to drop because construction went down, and what did we do? We increased the fee to bring the, the thing back up. Wait a minute, it's either there for future stuff, or we're going to make it, we're, we're carrying two or three million dollars we don't need to be carrying in our, in our coffers. It's one of the two, it can't be both. And I think all this I'm reading on here says the same thing, and, and I'll just sum it up with my last comment on this. If you read the last one, I finally got tired of making the same comment. I said, uh, maybe we should just get everybody a Mercedes, you know, I mean, what, what the heck? If we're going to buy Cadillacs and, and luxury items, let's just get everybody a Mercedes and, and not even mess with it. I think code has to go back and, and get some reality there. I know they're, they fund their own, but I think that, like you said, I think the fees could come down, I don't think the fees need to be up there. We don't need to be sitting on a couple million dollars.
That was the basis for my.
Would, would it be fair to make our comment that code needs to provide a better justification of their fund balance?
Excellent, excellent.
I think that's the perfect comment.
Do you want to do that for all the code ones?
Yep, yep.
All the codes.
Yeah, they.
We struggle, we struggle that every year, and it is, Walt is a very good presenter, and it, it seems to be right, but then it, six months later, was, was that right? So I don't know the answer to that one.
Yeah. I think code may be reacting to, you know, the two thousand eight debacle where we ended up laying off, cog ended up laying off code people because the construction, building construction just went flat. And so I guess they're looking to the possibility where construction level, you know, slows down, and it may not be permanent, but they need to, they need to carry the load and keep their people, because it's hard to get people back, so.
I will make a comment on that, that in two thousand and eight, you know, I was on the Pennsylvania Builders Association Legislative Committee, and we did a lot of discussion on this, and in two thousand and eight, there was not a lot of agencies that did inspections. So either opted in or you opted out, whether you're going to use another agency or you're going to have your own. We opted in because we wanted consistency, we want, today, there are tons of agencies out there that do inspections. In fact, we're probably the only ones that, in, in this area, I'm thinking, that, that do that. A lot of the, the outlying areas, Spring Mills and, and those areas, they have agencies that come and do the same for the inspection. We still get to look at the per, plans, we still get to order, issue the permits, but we don't always necessarily have. So in answer to your question, if that ever came, that we had to lay people off, maybe we could also, at that point, allow other agencies to come in and do inspections besides our own people, that would save us a lot of money. Look how much money we spend on vehicles, computers, personnel every year for that code. I mean, I'm not, I, I know what Nigel's saying, and I understand that logic, but I'm not as worried about it now as I would have been in two thousand and eight.
Joe's had his hand up.
Well, I, I respectfully have to, not necessarily disagree with Frank, but it doesn't work quite that way. Uh, I agree that, but there are other agencies out there, and we, we, we did contract with CDECOG. If we, we got busy, we'd call them in, that may or may not worked. Uh, this, this is a different type of animal than, than you would expect to find in Spring Mills or a better township, uh, and places like.
Building houses is the same.
Uh, I'd say not, I'd say not. Uh, it's a different situation, different scenario. If you're building a house, you're, you're putting a deck on, something like, yes, that, that, that's, isn't quite germane who, who inspects it. But the building we've gone on, the building we've gone through, and, and the liability that comes with building these buildings and this. Well, I, I just went through, there's two buildings that downtown that were built fifty years ago, being issued, if we'd had code, we might be. So I, I, I'm not exactly a proponent of getting, getting rid of our agency and bringing, making it easier for.
I didn't say we'd get rid of the agency, bud.
But then, but at the same time, you can't, you can't, you can't gerrymand this, you can't pick one agency over another. You have to say, this is our code agency. It's say, well, if you don't like our code agency, go get A, B, C.
No, 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 that's not what I, that is not what I said. I said our code agency would still review the plans, would still issue the permits, they would still put the requirements on. All I'm saying is that there are other inspection agencies out there that can do the inspecting part of.
Well, it's all, you can't separate the two.
Yes, you can. That's right, we don't need to.
That's part of our discussion.
So we're still going to have to pay for it.
Yes.
Perhaps that's a future discussion, which we can have.
Yes.
You have a comment?
I do want to let you know about some of the work that's been done since last budget. You're, you're absolutely right when you talk about permit fees. When I first got here in two thousand and ten, permit fees had just been increased from, I'd say, point six five to point nine nine. They got down as low, I'd say in twenty eighteen is point five five, and now they've been tricking, tickling back up to point seven five is where they are this year. At the budget process last year, it was discussed, and I don't know if you remember this better or not, but there is a service delivery model group that's gotten together and has worked. It's got developers in the area, it's got a manager serving on it, and some code staff along with that lines. Looking at the service delivery model aspect of it, you know, just as you're saying right there, what services do you need to have code there? Not only, you know, yes, we need a plans reviewer, do we need a second one in case something happens to the first plans reviewer? Do we need one electrical inspector, do we need two electrical inspector? There's a group working together to more discuss that and flush that out, to make sure that code is right sized and right qualified for the services that the developers need, because we can talk about the cost of, you know, raising the permit fee from point seven five to point eight five, and the impact on fees there, but that's a drop in the pan over top of what the developers would lose if they can't get an inspector there and on a timely basis. So we're hoping between the private community and the public community and running the organization that we can find that right balance. And we're working towards that right now.
We're taking forty-three, fifty-one, and fifty-two together into a generic kind of reply?
Yes, the comment I have is, code needs to provide better justification of their fund balance.
Okay.
Well, this, this committee certainly should come up with some ideas, right? Yeah.
Okay. Okay, shall we move on to the library capital budget? Item number one under that is ten thousand dollars to replace furniture. They're sixteen years old. I don't think I have any furniture in a house that's less than sixteen years old.
How about seventy-five?
Value goes up.
Well, my, my comment on that is, and I was waiting to see what everybody said, that, that we have an issue with this. Uh, we've always budgeted money for furniture, and they haven't bought it, where'd that money go? We had eighty thousand dollars budgeted a few years ago, and we didn't buy furniture, but we didn't get our money back. That was probably spent, I'm not saying it was spent bad right there, I'd say, so we have to be careful. I know, I know the library is, they're very proud of the library, they like to keep it very, uh, very, 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 and the furniture does get a lot of wear, but I think we need to take a look at the amount of money that is being offered or spent on furnishings and carpeting on that library. So however you want me to approach that, I will.
Let's, let's start, Nigel thoughts?
It's hard to say, I mean, without knowing. I haven't taken a tour of the library to see what the furniture looks like, you know, so I can't answer that question.
Danny?
I said, you know, ten thousand, having done some furniture shopping the last year, ten thousand doesn't go very far.
Oh, no, once you're buying furniture, it does not, I agree. But do we need to replace that furniture is another issue at that.
We also have, we also have heavily used staff, so, but I circled that, it's sort of an interesting, heavily used staff and public furniture.
Well, let me say this, I will, I will present to the library justification, give us justification for purchasing this. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't, but it seems to me, I would, I would have to bet for the last three years, they've had, they've had, I'll probably weigh, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of purchased furniture, and I'm not sure they bought that stuff, so I don't know that. I don't know that, I know, I know the one, eighty thousand they're going to buy, I didn't spend that, so, but let's just, I, I would just ask for justification on that.
Can we find that out, Joe, go back to the previous year's expenditures, what's that, what's that gone to before?
Yes, when I get back into the office, I can look into what the previous years were, you know, compare with the budget, I just.
Have we called the discussions in previous years about it, but we've never filed up and said.
Well, they didn't get it for some reason, I, but, oh, well, let's, let's.
Okay, so, sorry, to me, ten thousand dollars isn't a lot of money.
Not if you have to buy furniture.
I, I, um, you know, I mean, it depends how bad it is, like, let's just, I don't know, use your own judgment.
Would you like the comment to be, we would like to see the justification for the new furniture?
Well, if ten thousand isn't very much, I mean, you can't replace a whole lot of furniture and shelves, and for ten thousand dollars, we started at forty, fifty, sixty. furniture and shelves for ten thousand dollars when you start hitting forty, fifty, sixty thousand, then you start worrying about it, so I, if, in fact, it's only ten thousand dollars, I would be comfortable with that, but other than that, I think we'd need justification.
Let's see a few pictures.
Well, yeah, show us pictures.
Okay, I see a few pictures.
Well, I'll tell you what, let's go to the library. Yeah, let's go a road trip.
Go check some books out.
Joe's comment is always that a vehicle has outlived its useful life, as the furniture outlived its useful life.
And I go back to Kathy Alloway's comment, patrons leak.
Some of theirs do, that's for sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, facilities committee, ten thousand dollars planned to budget to replace the carpeting. Denny, Frank, and I said, go for it.
Okay.
Okay.
So do net, so do net.
Any problems with that? All right, good. Twenty thousand bucks to budget the, replace the AV equipment. I'm gonna take the lead on this and say, we already spent twenty-six thousand dollars on the equipment, let's install it.
This is for the library, not the COG building.
Correct. Am I incorrect that they didn't already previously purchase the equipment?
No.
The library?
Oh, they purchased it for the reformer.
Oh, okay. So it's a new expenditure.
A V equipment in the library, I guess, what for?
The main meeting room that they have.
In the meeting room?
Yes, there were library board meetings and those things occurring, I think it's a downswing.
I think, I'd like to have a discussion with library about the use of that. It's always been free, and I think it's time that we start putting a little bit of a value on that, on that piece of real estate. There's no place else that state college, you can get a free place to stay, that will hold all your meetings. So that's something, that's a different, that's a different subject, so.
Thoughts? Strong objections? Okay, we're on board, I guess. Ninety thousand dollars to replace the parking lot ticketing invalidation system, which has reached the end of its life earlier than expected. I thought it reached the end of its life when it was installed.
It didn't have a life.
Yeah. Having a discussion with Kathy about this, it's the wrong equipment. Kathy Alloway told me it's the wrong equipment. We're putting equipment that's designed to be inside outside.
Probably true, I didn't know that.
That's why I said.
I like Bruce's comment on this one.
I did too.
Yeah.
That says, that speaks volumes, that's a good one.
Will this one work?
Right here. Well, this one. Well, here's been my concern, we spent thousands of dollars on parking regulations, and we're so hung up on it. There's one, only one thing you have to do, is put up a parking sign that says, you will be towed if you park here, and have someone go and say, you're not allowed to be here. A volunteer could do that for peace sake. I know that, I know it's tough to have someone sit there and look and monitor the parking lot, after a few people are towed, they're not gonna park there anymore. The three hundred dollar towing fee isn't gonna last too long. And we would've spent hundred, this is our third try trying to secure that parking lot. We've probably spent a half million dollars trying to secure that parking lot, and it 'll sense a building lot, since that building's been open. Nothing is successful. So I would say, simply make it a library park patrons only, or you will be towed. Every other, every other parking lot state college works that way.
But you have, you have to know that they're a library patron.
Yes, you have to be aware of that, yes.
And when a tow truck driver comes through there, how do they know?
There has to be a person to call them, and that tow truck driver doesn't have to know, he just knows he's gotta call, and it's notified by this particular person.
We have parking garages downtown, boroughs.
Yeah.
Thoughts? Anybody else? Where are we going on this?
It's the wrong equipment.
I like to go.
Kathy's told me that should work.
Okay.
Well, we spent, we spent, we could let people park there, a lot less we spent on this. I don't know, we'll discuss that, a big discussion, I guess.
I would like them to investigate other equipment.
Well, okay, can we agree with my comment? Will this one work?
The police department is right beside it.
Yeah, all right, let's move on.
I know, that's always been a runny.
That's not spinner wheels. The planning, the 2023 staff will produce a regular series of pop-up community surveys, help identify hot button issues. Denny, who determines hot button? Frank, all right, me, eh.
Luke Warren rather than hot.
I don't know what they're gonna do, I really don't.
And right now, they don't have any planners, so maybe this shouldn't be something they worry about.
Yeah, I mean, my comment was.
That's something our new hires should do.
We should've kept Mark around for this.
My comment was not a top priority.
Our new hires can do that.
Are you comfortable with that?
Low priority.
Low priority? All right. Yeah, I mean, I don't know it's gonna cost anything, but other than opportunity costs of people's time. Regional fire protection program, two, three career personnel will likely be needed in So it's a note?
My comment's in the wrong place.
Oh, actually, and I actually, I think, I think our comment is basically, we got a fire company, so.
So it's N A for.
Not applicable.
I said no comment on any of the fires.
And I'd say the rest, the same thing on the rest of page six.
So I'll just say N A for all the fire ones since we're a fire company.
Okay.
In my case, just keep your mouth shut.
That number seventy-nine is a physical plan issue again. If something needs to be done, that's not ours.
But we don't pay for it.
That's right.
Okay, so page eighty, number eighty-three on page seven here, hire a full-time summer camping program coordinator. There's the positions, numbers and stuff. I'll let you know, one thing is that it's hard to quantify exactly what, but we have a lot of unmet demand for summer camps and programs.
Unbelievable.
And if we had a person, another person there coordinating that, it would serve a lot of people.
I think she, I think she has, probably will speak real on that, yes, I agree. It's becoming a, it's also becoming an animal of its own, our Parks and Rec Department, and it's no longer a little bit of a called program, it is a, it is a, the industry of its own. And for instance, this weekend, there was at least four little league and teenager league tournaments from New York to, from eleven-year-olds, twelve-year-olds, there's four I'm going on at the same time, from eleven-year-olds to eighteen-year-olds, from all, from New York to Mechanicsburg, so that's gotta be a nightmare for somebody.
They played them here, bud?
They were in state college, yes, yes. At least four major tournaments were going on, and probably ten teams each, and the eighteen-year-olds are one of, one of us from New York, so it's, it's becoming, it's becoming an animal of its own, that Parks and Rec Department.
Is there a parallel in the system that does that? The person that does the pools, is that's a different kind of position? What about Beth? What does she do there?
Beth does rec programs and summer camps largely. Jeff Hall will do the field rec tools and the tournaments and the leagues, and Todd Roth would do the pools. Melissa Kaufman does Millbrook Marsh Nature Center, and Erica Mann does the Accu-Belt Center.
And you're looking for a coordinator more or less for all of this?
No.
No.
Summer camping programs, so.
Well, just for summer camps.
So the pools are taking care of themselves, the nature center's taking care of themselves. Is that a fair?
This is, this is, this request is more along lines of getting Beth Lee some support in terms of summer camps and like the fitness programs and that sort of stuff.
Hey, go ahead. Those programs generate revenue, so if they need somebody to manage them better, so they continue to generate revenue, that'd be a good thing.
And serve our people. Okay, so we're in agreement with this one?
Mm-hmm.
Next item on the page, should a full-time natural resource supervisor be hired for parks operations based on a staffing study? Denny's interested in looking at intern possibilities. Frank had no comment. My one thought was, could this be combined, shared with the Millbrook Marsh Nature Center? Since we're talking natural resources supervisor, it seems to be some synergy there might be possible.
This is, this part is fairly new to me, I guess, that must be a new concept, but I'm not, no opinion on that so far.
Well, I read the description, it sounds like they need somebody to go to, go to the meetings for the manager, the grounds manager, you know, he's always going to the COG meetings and everything and doesn't have time to run the facility. That's where I read the thing, more or less. Yes, I did read that part.
So is anybody, are we comfortable with this one, as it is?
I don't know what a natural resources guy does.
Well, I would suggest maybe I would ask more, when at the meeting, ask more information if they're back there.
So also, eight months position. Eight months higher.
Yeah.
And then it would be full-time the following year.
Four?
Yes.
Yeah, and I'll tell you, we can get into this a little later, maybe as a general topic, but I'm less enthusiastic about eight-month hires because those people are, have the ability to come back for us for unemployment insurance.
This would be a little bit different than that, this is projecting a May first 2023 start date, so there'll only be eight months in 23 and then twelve months in 24.
Oh, all right, all right, so good, I like that. What do you think about the question about court synergies with the nature center?
I think, put it, put it in there, I mean, it's, you know, it's part of the park system and everything, I would think that there would be synergies, but I don't work that closely with it, so I think it's fair to say.
That's a question, okay. Good, we're good? All right, next up, staff will, this is gonna be a good one. Staff will continue to pursue the mobile concessions project, to serve the pools, softball complex, et cetera. I'll give you a bit of background since I've sat on the authority meetings. They tell me that they've had a hard time getting vendors to commit to a season.
For a day or week even.
Yeah, so that's tough. Alternatively, they're in competition with local businesses. Is that, is that, you know, a good view? And I'll come back again as, why not purchase a trailer? Why do we need an engine to drive?
I did some research on that. I'm not saying it's right or wrong.
Okay.
Except to me, it makes more sense when I look at this. A trailer, you, all the concessionaires, they have trailers that go to carnivals, and they make sense, they pull in and pull out. They have a truck designated for that, they have a truck, they have people to do it, it sets for a week at a time. This particular thing may be only set for a day, maybe one night there at Hessfield, the next day there's someplace else, so we have to bring this truck wherever it comes from, and maneuverability is unbelievably tough on a truck. We have, people try, we have adults that probably can't back trailers, which is, I'm probably one of them, or park a trailer, so this, it's so much more convenient. I asked food truck operators why they don't use trailers, they say, well, that's stupid. There's some do, but the ones that do have trailers don't like the idea. They like the food truck, you pull in, you operate, everything's self-contained, you're ready to go, you don't have to wait for a truck to show up, or a spot to come and get it, it's so much more convenient to have a truck. So I think it's more expensive, I believe, because the trailer itself was, but if you buy a trailer and a truck, it's cheaper to buy a truck with food stuff on it. So you buy a sixty thousand dollar truck to tow this trailer with, so it, in many, many ways, it seemed to make sense if they have a food truck.
I appreciate that dive into the things.
What's the business plan look like for this thing? Have you seen the business plan?
Great business plan.
I have, it looks good.
Great.
Is it a written document?
What's that?
The business plan is a written document.
It is, yes, we've.
Who wrote it?
Parks wrote it, and we just went through some final revisions with them, going through and working with, did some work with IT, and then did some work with finance, so I think we got it finalized, or just about finalized for presentation back to finance this month.
And it has a lot of feedback from the people at the pools and at their parks, what kind of things are interested in.
Three-year payback, maybe. It projected a three-year payback, payoff, so that's.
That's the base of my question.
Yes, it projected three years payoff, but whether that's realistic or not, it could be two-year payoff, but my guess is it's three to five-year payoff.
Have the maintenance cost built into this plan?
Maintenance cost, they're gonna build into the plan, there's a copy coming out, so I think you'll see it with, released with the finance committee agenda, so I think you'll, if you dive through it along that lines, I think you'll find a lot of your questions will be answered.
If, if someone would take that business, that model business plan to the bank, they could walk away with a million dollars.
All right, let me get some Nigel and Frank. Nigel?
You know, I'm willing to go along with the recommendation I was. The justification for having a truck instead of a trailer does make sense, you know, if you're gonna be bouncing all over the place, and Parks and Rec doesn't have the equipment to just, you know, hook up here and there, so, you know, I'll go along with that part.
Frank?
Yeah, my only comment, I pretty much left all the parkings to you, because I figured you're on all those committees and you know better than me, but as an outside observer looking at this, we get told all every day, we can't find enough lifeguards, we can't find enough employees to do this, we can't find enough people to cut grass, we can't find this, well, let's get a truck where we need more employees. That just, to me, sounds like any business plan in the world buys a trucker today, can't find anybody to work.
I have an answer for that.
Whatever.
That very question was asked.
That's my comment.
What was your?
The very question was asked, and I don't know who gave that answer about employees, every, they have, they put a request out for employees, Parks and Rec, and they got four times than they can hire. Some good, which surprised me, right? I don't remember what the ratio was, but they're getting a very good response to employees for some.
For this thing?
Not for this thing, but for general, general parks, seasonal work, pool work, lifeguards, everything, they're getting very good response, maybe three to one, four to one, five to one.
They're fully staffed. This would not be a dedicated person, this would be someone that would be cycled into the job.
Frank, how do you sell hard goals?
There would be, there would be somebody there at site who is certified on food safety, I forget what the exact details are, but.
Serve safe.
Serve safe.
Serve safe. The people in the truck would be supervised by that person overall, not necessarily standing over their shoulders.
We're talking two people?
We're talking someone there who has been certified on that, that can go look at it, they can go look at it and say, everything's being done the way it should be done. The regular people working there would be part of the staff that'd be cycled in and out, the same people that we asked to go empty the trash cans at the pools. They'd rather be in the truck than empty trash cans.
You guys forget one of my volunteer jobs. I inspect camps. I inspect food services, and I will tell you right now that the food, serve safe person better be Andy, because if I go in that kitchen, and the same thing's gonna happen with your health inspectors, and that person can't answer the question right, or they don't have something right, you're gonna be shut down real quick.
Well, that's, that's our responsibility. So we're comfortable with this?
They need radiation to kill.
Oh, my gosh, okay.
Just, just on the edge of comfortable, not totally.
Would like to hear some more details?
You guys are it, you're the parking rec guy, go for it.
It's a good business plan.
Oh, that was amazing, that.
I think, I think financial will be successful. I, you know, they tell me that they can't get regular vendors to commit. By the way, there is a plan to ask some vendors to come in for special event type things, so the cone ice people come in on a particular day, and some of those things, but this is talking about our regular service.
I didn't think this would be such a, I didn't discuss it, it was, but you have to remember, we also, we added on this, I'll, where you'll read this in there, don't forget, we want concession stands at our parks, that's not loose sight of that. We do want that, and if, if the day comes that we can do that and phase out this park truck, or sell it, or whatever, that'd be great. But, but we owe the people that come to the parks on some, some concession, we owe them something, and it's not there, we can't get it.
Do we have a food transfer at Oak Hall now?
I don't know the answer.
No, at Oak Hall, we run a private concession stand.
Yeah.
We run a concession stand at Oak Hall.
We, we do.
Yes. Okay, so should our, should we lead with our comment? Temporary fix, we need concession stands?
Well, I think, I think that we should, our goal should not, we'd lose our goal that we want to put concession stands in, in our parks full-time. That should be our goal, but this, this certainly means the need of, of, of what we need to give our customers when they come into the parks. When they want, they want, they come for part of that.
Concession stands in our regional facilities, pools and such, pools and regional parks.
Yes, 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 yes. Now, one thing with the question was, and I, and I was very, agree with this, competition with private businesses. If, in fact, what they're telling us is true, they can't get it, there's no competition. If it comes to the point where we are competition, maybe we want to think about that, but certainly not for four or five years, I don't think.
So is your comment that you support this as a temporary fix, but we feel that we need concession stands at our regional facilities?
I think that's a very good.
Or, or not a substitute for having, eventually having concession stands. Because they may want, we may want to bring it around to other parks that are having one-day events. They have the winter carnival here.
Loose spring, yes.
Physically look at Oak Hall and where the concession building is.
Yeah.
And, and try to get a food truck, or up there, you can't do that.
They had food trucks up there, but.
Close to the building or in the park?
Before, yeah, oh, yeah, right close to the building, it was a mess, but it was before they opened up the concession, they had, they had a pizza guy up there or something else. It was, it was a mess then, you're right.
I know, alright, let's, so can we move on?
Yeah.
Yep, alright, the bottom, page eight, park capital budget. It sounded like Denny, Frank and I all said, you know, questions about the mobile food truck, we talked about above, everything else sounded good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, all good?
Okay.
Alright, I'll turn to the page. Page nine in the middle, aquatics operating budget. Seasonal park, seasonal park specialist position that works both pools, as well as Milbrook Nature Center, be extended from seven to 10 months. I'll say again, I'm gonna lead on this one, investigate going to full-time. It's better retention, you have a full-time person, you don't get hit with unemployment. So I, I would like to see that on the table, other thoughts?
Sounds good to me.
You, you hire a part-time person and they have, they leave, they take another job and you start over the next year.
And you pay unemployment.
Every, every year you end up starting over.
And you play, pay training for a new person.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I, I'd rather go full-time or delay a year if necessary to go full-time.
I think we have, we have the business to do.
Okay.
So the comment is investigate going full-time now?
Yes. Or delay a year. And go in full-time, but yeah. We can, we can speak at the time of why that's. Aquatics capital note, repair, pump replacement, basically take care of what we have. Any problem with that?
No. No, I, I, that's basically part of the FCA's that we do. That's what I, in fact, I thought the number was 200, but I don't know where 125 came in.
So we're, we're okay with that noted. Active adults center, should the staff assistance hours return to the original 20 hours per week? They've been shooting back up. And Danny does county office for the aging contribute money?
Yes.
Yes?
On a contractual basis.
Uh, uh, it depends on how many people show up, right?
No, it's a contractual basis, it's about a little more than $100,000 a year, and it's got about a two to three percent escalator in it.
From, from the county?
Yeah. From the county.
That's about what we started with, that's up there.
Frank and I are about, anybody have a problem with this one? Okay, we're good. Bottom of page 10, full-time program coordinator for center be had, be hired in 23. Basically, I was yes, Frank was neutral, and Danny was.
Same comment.
Any problems with this item?
No, okay.
Okay. Good. Page 11. Is this the longest meeting of the year? Should the seasonal parks position that works at both pools, as well as Milbrook Marsh Nature Center, be extended from seven to 10 months?
Same comment.
Same, you commented on the pool side, this is the same comment for Milbrook Marsh.
Yeah.
We're gonna bring about the full-time over a period of two or three years.
Yeah, well, and again, I'd, I'd rather bring us a full-time now, or, or wait a year and then have a full-time person. But let's, let's hire people full-time. Okay? Okay?
Yeah.
Okay, should a full-time facility rental coordinator be hired? Danny thought include the task with current employees, Frank was neutral, and again, I was, let's investigate, investigate going 12 months now.
Can I say something on that?
Please.
I, I thought of something after I read that thing I got sent at four o'clock today. One of the things that, and I, and I don't know, Joe, you can answer this for me. Do we have an electronic sign-up rental program at the cog, or at the rec, or at rec, Milbrook Marsh?
Online.
Yeah.
They, they use Rec Desk for that, but I don't believe in terms of, you know, Milbrook Marsh.
Well, the reason I'm asking is, and I've seen it now on operation, again, with many of the camps, they have a, a program, and it's specifically for the Boy Scout, but it's, it's, or scouting, it's called Black Puck. You can go on there, you can rent a, a facility, you go on there, it tells you whether it's rented, who else is around that weekend in, in the facilities. You could go right down to picking your programs, picking, like for Boy Scout, you can pick merit badges, I want this merit badge, that merit badge. It's all done electronically, and it's done online, and it's very, it can be done from your phone, everywhere. So it's something that could be used by the general public. You, you're still gonna need somebody to coordinate it, don't get me wrong, I'm not talking against this, but I think it would make us a lot more efficient if there is a program out there for that, for rentals, that would, would, would just save, and, and all you gotta do is print it out, it tells you, that's already rented, it gives, it gives you a list of revenue, I mean, guys are ready for it.
If I understand your question in the, you know, because it's sort of an arm's length away, and the answer to it, the answer is yes, they can do it. And they rebuilt the website a few years ago, and into their reservation and, you know, tracking software, Rec Desk. So the answer, the big question is yes, but they don't do necessarily field rentals, it's more pavilion rentals and classes and that type of stuff. There's stuff gotta have somebody in there, you know, doling out the fields to different things going, you know, which ones, which ones are gonna be in those types of things. But, and people want to see, you know, Milbrook Marsh, people want to go look at the barn, people want to go look at the, you know, nature center and the Spring Creek Education Building.
And Milbrook Marsh brings in quite a bit of money in terms of rentals, facility rentals, grants and stuff that they do.
Yeah. For some reason, I'm not sure what the attraction is, but they do love it.
But they're, my impression is that they're close to being budget neutral, is that fair?
No, they're, the, the, I think the support is roughly $100,000-ish on the operating side.
Okay.
At this point in time.
Our support?
Yes, the support from municipalities is approximately $100,000.
And what's the total budget for their?
I'm gonna say about $250,000.
Alright, well, they're doing pretty well.
Don't push my arm too much.
They're doing pretty well, I, that's why I, I would support this, because they're doing, doing a pretty good job.
Well, honestly.
Again, with the comment about full-time.
This is a situation where this person could actually probably pay for most of their salary by bringing in, I've been to shows out there, plays out there, there's weddings out there, there's all kinds of things that can be explored.
So it's just a revenue neutral?
It could be, in the long-term, yeah, it's, it's like the library stuff that.
Nothing's ever revenue neutral.
So we're, are we, are we supporting this with the cap, with the comment about investigate going full-time now, or, or holding off?
Yeah, I think all those, I think all those are in that.
That's probably overall. Okay, good, thank you. Capital budget. Let's go to provide answers for the boardwalk. Option three.
I'm, I've gotten lost on this boardwalk.
That boardwalk.
I can, I can bring you up the.
That boardwalk's gonna be expensive, go ahead.
What, what the situation is, is the boardwalk, if you've noticed, and it's closed down in some spots. So when we looked at how were we gonna repair it, we found out that repairing wasn't gonna be enough, because most of the, the piers for going, making the bridges and the walkway are pretty much going away, and they're all in, in.
Mud.
Mud, not mud, they're in, in protected waters, streams and everything. So we had to look at how to do that, and one of the things we looked at was the decking. We can get the structure and everything done, Andy Freeman, I think, talked to us a little bit, but there's some people talked to, but it was, the decking, they were gonna either use black locusts or E-Pay.
Those should be easier.
And, and that stuff's not cheap, but it lasts like 25, 30 years without anything on it, if you, if you stain it, it'll last forever. So that's, that's where the cost comes up, and like I said, the original estimate was 3.5 million when we started this. So the first thing we had to do, if you remember, we had to do a study with DEP.
$250,000.
Two hundred and some thousand, well, that's what's ongoing, it's gonna come back, and DEP's gonna tell us whether the, the things we wanna do to protect the streams are good enough, and if it comes back okay, then we'll get a bid, probably be more than that by the time we get it back, so. But that's what, that's what's going on there.
So the study's in process, in progress right now?
Yes, it's in progress, the study's in progress, until the study comes back, we can't really proceed with that.
Noted?
Noted.
Okay, the service building is set to be evaluated in 2022. Options, major renovation, removal and complete rebuild of traditional construction, removal and complete rebuild using a fabricated, prefabricated options. Frank, I'd like you to start off in this.
Why, why me?
What do you think about prefab?
Oh, I, I mean, you know, there's prefabs out there, they're, they're good, they, they wall panel stuff anymore. It, it's what's, what's most convenient, most economical for you.
Maintenance facility, it doesn't have to be pretty.
No, it doesn't, I mean, you know, I haven't had a problem with prefab.
This isn't a maintenance facility, just to be clear, this is the, where the staff are housed at the Milbrook Marsh. So currently it's not a.
It's not a visitor facility.
Uh, that's where people walk into to, to access the staff.
Okay.
Is that white, that white structure?
The old capping barn that they're in now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is to replace the capping barn where Melissa, Mandy and Mariset.
Yeah, the wind blows more through the windows than, than it does outside, you get more ventilation in there.
Well. Let's, shall we go with, like, just trying to consider prefab? Or keep prefab on the table?
Keep it on the table, keep everything on the table, until we get the final answer, which one's the best number.
Alright. Does that make any sense?
We'll find out.
Yep. $10,000 planned to be budgeted for terrace of the visitor parking lot. Just need to be done before further damage happens.
I'd wanna know what damage is there for $10,000, is it a stone parking lot?
Well, it, it's, it's part of the, like I said, the facilities, all these assessments we did, this is, this is what's come out of it, guys. And, and that's kind of what we're trying to do, is get a number so that these routine maintenances can come into the plan every year, that they're planned and they're not something that just jumps up. In other words, if we don't spend that $10,000 now, it could be $20,000 the next time we have to look at it, or 30 or 40.
Could that parking lot project be combined with the Oak Hall Regional Park parking lot project?
I had a comment on the.
For like an economy of scale kind of situation?
I, I had a comment on, on the Oak Hall Regional Park, the parking lot. I don't think we should do anything there until we get bathrooms at Hessfield. I, I, I mean, you know, we keep putting money in all these other places, and there we are sitting, wait, what was it, $100,000 or what? Now it's probably $200,000, but we'll just keep postponing it, so I'd say we should have money in there for the bathrooms at Hessfield.
And Bruce, I made me out of turn on this one, but one of the discussions that Eric and I had was more philosophical on this. If you look at these, a lot of these questions with the CIP, they're transactional based. Should we replace the furniture? Should we, you know, do this at the parking lot at Milbrook Marsh? We really are getting to the point of needing to say, you know, we talked about perhaps saying, should we adopt all of the recommendations as, as approved by the facilities committee and plan financially for doing that? Because we really have never said, I'll take it more philosophical, we are now, the facilities committee in these facility condition assessments is now how cog is going to maintain its facilities, and get out of these transactional type of questions and more into the big picture of, no, this is how we are conducting business going forward. We had that, you know, sort of sidebar conversation as this was wrapping up, with the transition between facilities coordinators and different things. It just, it didn't materialize this year, but that's just something that's on the back burner in staff's mind.
Yeah, eventually, you'll get one number, hopefully, from, from the facilities committee that'll say, this is what's needed to maintain our buildings this year, or to upgrade or replace or whatever. Hopefully, we'll get to that.
That's what we do too, but fleets would be. We're talking, we're talking fleet vehicles?
But it's the same concept as what you do with your fleet vehicles.
Yeah, and the only, the only issue we have on the fleet right now is the fact that we have all of the data we need to make decisions, in my opinion, of when to replace and when not to replace. We don't necessarily have the metrics as to what triggers that, you know, is an electric vehicle? Oh, okay, well, now we need to increase the funding into the building infrastructure and different things, you know, to meet those types of goals. So what we don't have is a metrics associated with that, we have enough data behind to make an educated, informed decision when to replace. We just don't have one.
Right.
That's policy level, as to how to.
Right.
Alright, so let's bring it, circle back to this particular parking lot and $10,000. And does anybody have a strong disagreement with this, or should we just go with noted?
I don't know, I think that they will have to prove what it needs $10,000, that it's gonna cost $10,000. I would say appropriate money for it, and let's find out what it is. I, I don't know what the damage is that would cost $10,000.
Well, if it's getting us a paid parking lot, we're suddenly getting into a stormwater issue.
It's not gonna pay, it's gonna be repaired.
It's all stone, it's stone.
Stone.
Is it gravel?
Yeah, Milbrook Marsh.
Is it terraced or impervious?
That parking lot has a stormwater issue, the way it is.
It is?
It's running, it has a runout going into the walking paths, they've never corrected it. Every time it rains hard, there's water running out that parking lot.
That's called, it's what's called a marsh.
And this were the things that the facilities coordinator were looking into, and the facilities project manager will continue, and that's one of the things where we're coming from, you know, having this information at our fingertips.
Well, how much is the permit slack gonna cost?
I'm just an accountant.
Alright, let's, let's move on to the top of page 13. $10,000 to support land management habitat restoration at Milbrook Marsh Nature Center. And there's a whole lot of Pennsylvania and, and federal agencies that are involved with this. It's a nature center. Should we take care of it? Should we take care of nature?
Go back to nature.
Any problems with that one?
No.
Noted. Parks capital budget, regional parks capital budget. Approved $45,000 to budget to assess the needs of Oak Hall Regional Park parking lot and driveway. We're kind of getting back into the same issue.
You say $45,000, we need to assess the needs?
Let, let me explain something here, guys. All these things that say the facilities committee, there is documentation behind them, there has been assessments, there has been, these, again, these are quotes, they are not bids, because we haven't got to the point where we're gonna execute them. All we're saying here is we wanna move to the next step on these. And, and that's what this is, trust me, there are, Lou has graphs and charts, and we've, we've gone through these facility assessments forward and backwards. What we're trying to do is do a little bit now, so we don't have to do a lot. That, that, you know, if we do a little bit, and this might just be, all it might be is a, roll, roll the parking lot out to get it smoothed back out so we don't get ruts or to take care of stormwater. So that's what we're looking at here, it's not that we're going to go back and replace this driveway or replace this thing, it's gonna be to maintain it, so it doesn't fail.
Well, Frank, what this says is, we want $45,000 to assess it, that means really?
That's, that's what's needed.
Well, I thought you said we already did that.
Some of them we did, some we didn't, some are, some require us to have somebody come in that's beyond our scope.
I thought, okay.
But this is just for the engineering.
Trust me, this is, we're, we're, we're like probably about 60% of this process, we've got done, and, and it's getting more and more every time. Now, we get our new facilities manager, hopefully that'll pick up the speed again.
Well, does that have to be this year, though?
Not necessarily.
That's my, that's my question, are we budget?
It's a note, it's not a budget.
Well, forty-five, we'll be budgeted in 2003. Are we gonna use that in 2003?
2023.
23, I mean.
Let me, let me ask Joey a question, is College Thompson responsible for the stormwater issue at, stormwater runoff at Oak Hall Park? Is it, was that designed around the Thompson breaks, or was an engineer involved in that?
Yes, Stahl Schaefer Engineering was involved when they did that phase one. My understanding, at least for the walkway coming down through, is that we have a stone walkway, the grass on the sides is puffed up, so some grating could help get that water off of the two sides, but it. But it doesn't go off the sides. It creates a chute and runs it down into the parking lot. So, yeah, there's a lot of work up there that could be done. Um, I don't have cost estimates on how much is involved. College Township Water Authority also has the OH twenty well project that's coming up, so they'll be doing some work up there. So, there could be cost savings in tag teaming some of this kinda stuff, but I think getting out in front of it and getting a list, getting some maintenance plans rather than just capital projects, so that we take care of what we have, I think are very important.
Does that plan to be paved?
I am under no impression that anything will be paved up there other than possibly one or two spots right in front of the wellhouse.
Well, okay, thank you.
Let me ask you a question. Let me ask you. Is forty-five or fifty thousand dollars reasonable? Does someone look at that parking lot and say, this is what we need to do? Seems to me that, that some of these contractors like EB or all these guys could look at that and say, yeah, this is what you need, from their best experience for less than forty-five or fifty thousand dollars. Maybe they don't have the engineering seal, but they may have the engineering seal. I don't know that.
Well, we just paid sixty-seven thousand dollars for a traffic study out here, so they're not cheap.
I, I'm not, I'm not saying they're cheap, but is it necessary? I mean, it's a, I don't know.
That's a loaded question, Joey.
Without having the scope in the background.
It's a loaded question. It's a loaded, I don't just, but you've worked with parking lot sites. Well, I'm not gonna put you on the spot. Never mind.
All right, so...
So Stahl Schaefer did that one.
Let's take care of what we have.
Yep.
Okay. Boy, they keep, damn facilities committee. Facilities committee approves thirty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty to complete the fence replacement on the project for the final two fields of test balls, test softball complex. How about our thoughts on this? Well...
Well, the fence, that has, this has field, right?
Yeah, so the fence...
We, we repaired that last year. What happened? That was budgeted last year.
Two fields.
The fence at Hess Field?
Yes, there's four fields. So, they, they, over four years, they did one time, C two.
Okay, that was, now we're talking about different fence.
We, we never, we never approved the final design for Hess Field. Twelve years ago, we never did.
We have two options at this point in time for Hess Field. One three field, one four field. Am I remembering correctly?
But there are gonna, there could possibly be fields re-aligned out there.
There could be, uh, but the fences were...
I'm wondering why we're putting money into this too.
Well, because you have the fence, because they're playing ball. I mean, I, you're right, Dan. I know what you're saying, but at the same time, if they're gonna use them, we have to get the facilities proper to use it. Simple as that. I mean, in the long run, you're right, there could be three fields, four fields. I don't know that, but they have that field to play with now and they need to make those fields operable.
Yeah, I think it's a safety issue too, because that's used heavily for tournament play and also for regular play, so I think they have to fix them.
Okay. Will the fences be able to be reused in the next prop, next phase?
Probably not. I don't know that. I don't have any kind of fence, but not.
Is temporary fencing an option?
Uh, not in ball fields. Generally, we just have, how many, how many fields you've been at?
We used to have temporary fencing down there.
How many fields you've been at, Frank, that had temporary?
We used to have it down there and it wasn't good.
Well, how many ball fields that had temporary, it just doesn't work, yeah.
So, what are we saying here? We're gonna do it?
Well, I think it's, if it's, if it's not necessary, our facilities committee says, yes, we need it.
Any problems with that?
Nope.
Gotta do it. Okay.
You can do it.
Okay, should forty-six thousand be budgeted for two water wheels for Whitehall Road, regional parks, and manually water the grass fields? There aren't going to be, um, on, there's not gonna be the tru, the high-end irrigation system, so these would be...
There you go. Now, now we're paying for that, so it's fair to put your...
We're paying, because we, because that's a lot more expensive.
Yes.
So, there are essentially sprinklers that operate out there and we'll serve those fields, and if we don't put sprinklers out there, we lose the fields.
Yes.
They sort of creep along the grass slowly and sprinkle on his elbow.
So, okay.
So, we agree.
So, we're good?
Yep.
We're good.
Keep your...
We're good, we're good. Okay, IT study recommendations. Fifteen thousand planned for enable, enabled multi-factor authentication across all COG agency infrastructures. I, I tell you, I saw the detailed analysis of the, um, COG IT security vulnerabilities. And it's scary. So, I'll, I'll say, um...
Should we all be learning Chinese?
God, you didn't just say that.
I, I mean...
For fifteen thousand, I would say do it.
I, I would suggest though, because we have to have multi-factor for our bank software now, the new bank that we're with. And I have actually a security token that gives me a new security token every time that I use to log in for the multi-factor. Requiring, if you don't provide cell phones to all of your employees and you're requiring them to use a personal cellphone to get the code that they need to log in, that becomes problematic from a benefit standpoint and IRS standpoint. So, the security token thing that I downloaded was free. I had to get it from the bank, like they had it set up, but there's another way to crack this nut, is what I'm saying. I support it. There's just a different way to do it that doesn't open up Pandora's box.
I have so many electronic devices that, I mean, I, I do a dual factor every day, all the time today. Yeah, let's, I, I put security tokens on the table. Anybody have a problem with that?
No.
Who knows any about?
IT people.
Maybe, maybe.
All right, so we'll take the manager's suggestion there.
Yeah, okay.
We're, we're in agreement, but take a look at the token issue. Up to sixty-six thousand five hundred planned to replace upgraded firewall appliances. Uh, this is more of the, um, the IT security stuff. Frank, your thoughts?
On that? Which one was that? Is that the one where I said State College, you pay their fair share?
Yeah.
Now, are they?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're talking with them about that and different things, because there are some benefits, you know, to the borough within the study to make us... A lot of times people are thinking that the borough needs to be better providers, but COG also has to be a better customer. So, you gotta look at this as two different ways in doing that, and by having standardized equipment and everything up to date and not just, you know, making it work for, you know, to have IT service out, or IT internet connections and those types of things, this is the way to do it. And these are investments on COG property.
And, and three on the alpha bottom, those, they apply those to the alpha coverage, Jerry?
Those, yes, those will be the three alpha stations, and that's actually not even State College Borough IT. That would be under UDNI, the service provider for the Alpha Fire Company.
Would it be fair to say, review how the costs are allocated to municipalities?
Well, it would be, it would be, it's a call formula, I would assume.
Well, I see three items for the Alpha Fire Company. We're not part of that.
We're not part of that.
I see State College, you know, they, they would be in the proper budgets.
In, in the State College Borough IT one, that raises a red flag for me, so I'd have to look at that. I think that may just be a bad descriptor.
I, I, I see three.
Type of the type of?
I see three park, four park related things and half moons, not part of the park system. So, I just, it seems to me, you know, review how these are allocated to municipalities.
And they would be done within the funds.
As it's fair.
Yeah, but within the fund.
Yeah, they're, they're, they'd be contained in the fund that the municipality contributes to based on the funding formula.
Forty thousand dollars is planned to be budgeted, begin other security improvements, um, backup, uh, policies, old infrastructure. I'm still wondering windows, using Windows seven, by the way. Decommissioned all devices and no longer supported.
That's a hundred and...
That's forty grand.
Hundred and forty.
That's forty.
No, it's forty grand and sixty grand. That's a hundred and, a hundred and ten thousand.
All right, yeah. Well, the page before was another forty-five.
Yeah.
But, uh, I mean, our IT was behind, years and years behind the security that you have. Thoughts, problems?
Who, who is versed in this that knows that we actually do or don't need?
We hired an outside consultant to make recommendations. Again, we, the, the details are held confidential because putting out the details tells everybody where we're weak.
But my issue is, we, this money's going to hire somebody or to tell us that, or this is gonna be the full cost of this?
No, it's the remaining of the security improvements.
So, this will be the cost of the actual security. We, we will have to hire somebody on top of that to, or have we ever done that?
It's not clear to me that we're hiring some, do we have an IT person?
We get services from the Borough of State College for IT. There's talk about perhaps having an IT administrator at some point, whether that's contractual or whether it's an employee. It's not put into this year's budget, in that idea being, again, to make COG a better customer and more user-friendly to the borough in terms of, hey, when we're bringing Tracer up to you, we are vetting this, you know, cooperatively. Same thing with, um, some of the, like the mobile concessions unit, as we bring that forward, there's an IT component to our decision-making. Yes, it's, it's a cost. This is more of, I don't wanna call it a contingency fund, but this allows us to keep moving in the IT stabilization. You're buying multi-factor authentication.
We don't know if these numbers are firm enough. We don't know, we don't know if these numbers are...
There were costs associated with, with, with doing these types of things for the forty thousand dollars within the IT study.
Forty thousand is about what the Recycling Refuge Authority put into an IT person. We have a four, a person there that works on just IT. The number's very close to that.
Right, and this is more, I would think, more consulting services associated with getting, hey, our policies up to date and use as it's supposed to be. The decommissioning of stuff not, no longer supporting the manufacturing, reviewing of legacy infrastructure, implementing new improved backup procedures. So, this gets us moving on the next phase of projects after we do the multi-factor, which is gonna be required for cyber fraud insurance to keep that coming. And after we take care of these firewall appliances and network infrastructure, all these locations, the forty thousands is the next step.
That goes back to my original question. Do we know if these numbers are correct? How do we know if these numbers, and how do we know if these numbers are gonna give us what we want? Probably, we, we, we rely on, we've been relying for fifteen years on advice from someone else, and I can tell you, the years I've been on here, we've spent millions and millions of dollars on this. We're still nowhere, being where we wanna be. I, I don't know the answer to that.
The answer to that is, this, the estimates were provided by the consultant who did the IT study. And then the Borough of State College IT went through and looked at these things and, and confirmed them or adjusted them as they did.
So, this came from that IT study?
Correct.
Okay.
And then it was corroborated by State College Borough IT.
Okay, okay.
Any problems with this, anybody? We're good.
We agree.
I don't know. I, I, it's just like I said, it's... It's like insurance, you know? You miss out, they ask for your new five-year staffing study, staffing in the study section, offer potential ways to improve the plan. All right, so, is that what I get? We don't have it yet.
Twenty twenty-four program plan.
No, that's, that, that's that five-year fund still there, huh?
Well, okay, yes.
Five-year staffing and study section.
It's in the back of the program.
That's one of those things they sent us.
Yeah, yeah.
It's back here.
It's back there.
It's page one, uh, fifteen through one seventeen.
It's that stuff back there.
It's, it's this, yeah.
And we wanted to see if you guys were happy with it, or if you guys wanted to add more meat to the bone or something along that line.
What do you mean happy? I'm never happy with spending more money.
I know.
We only made us wants to spend all the dang money.
No. We're, we're, we're less than two percent of the damn whole budget, so don't go there. Anyway, I, I, the one thing, the one thing that I, I, and Bud said here, when I'm reading through this, and I get this every year, every year I get this same thought process. We, we do studies. The study says spend a million bucks, we spend two million. You know, the study says add ten employees, we add twenty. I mean, we can't, this is not an unlimited faucet. At some point, we've gotta say, make your choices, you know? Like, for example, the, I, I, I pulled the parking wreck out, just, just, uh, when I was looking at that. And they wanna spend another two hundred and thirty thousand dollars on employees from what I got net, 'cause they had three hundred, but they're getting rid of twenties. Anyway, it comes out to two hundred. And I looked and I said, okay, so I went down their fund balance at the beginning of twenty twenty-two, and they had a fund balance of one point three million dollars. And the new mo, the, the money that increased by to get to that number was two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So, they increased their, their, uh, fund balance by two hundred and seventy thousand, and now they're asking us for another two hundred and thirty thousand on the budget to hire more people. At some point, now, I'm not saying that, and parking wreck, I think they need one point three. Don't get me wrong, but I'm using this as an example. We're sitting on, some of our agencies have significant fund balances, and they keep coming back every year. We wanna spend more money on this. We are looking at a fund balance policy for our township. I think COG needs to have fund balance policies on, on how much percentage and what that, that these agencies can have sitting around not being worked, 'cause that's tax dollars. That's our township dollars. That's going over there and sitting there is fund balances. That shouldn't be.
First, it's, it's a misdemeanor to say fund balance. We, COG does not have a fund balance as such.
No, their agencies do.
They have, each agency has monies that are carried over. They don't use, but they budget every penny that's, that's on there. They may or may not use it, and that's a carryover.
How they keep having that much money each year?
Does it carry over? They use a carryover.
Okay, well, then they've got too much.
That's what we could look at, is to, maybe more of a zero, zero balance budget, which is, we wanna be careful because there is no such thing in this damn world, in this thing. So, you have to be careful. They carry over certain, certain amounts from year to year for certain things. It's not a fund balance as such. We don't say, uh, the, the Parks and Rec Aquatics has a fund balance of this much money. They don't. They have money that are carried over that maybe hasn't spent, maybe we've deferred for next year. So, it's complicated.
No, I understand.
And what you, but we, what I think, what I didn't quite understand is that, that I don't think there were members of the general forum that understand that this is a contract between municipalities and the COG. It's not a, it's not a, let's, let's put some money on here, let's say we're gonna pave this, let's say we're gonna pave that, how much that's gonna cost. This is a contract, certain amount of money every year, so, so there, there doesn't really need to establish, they don't have to reserve, have to, they reserve a thirty-five thousand dollars. Basically, I think it's thirty-five thousand of non-committed monies in there. I, I think it's thirty-five, right?
It is thirty-five.
And we've never really used all that.
I understand that.
So, it's a little bit different. I know what you're saying, Frank. There's no doubt about it.
It's not the COG I'm talking about. It's the agencies.
All right, so the question here is, um, potential ways to improve, improve the five-year staffing and study section for the two thousand twenty-four plan.
Yeah.
And shall we talk about that next year?
Yes.
Yes, I was wondering about that.
We were just going to revise the document if we, if we like.
Yeah, yeah, I think we're, we're good for now. We gotta... Five-year staffing and study comments. My one comment was, think about phasing and prioritizing that. It's a big, big chunk of money. We've talked about a bunch of the individual stuff today, and we all say, yeah, that sounds good, but overall, it adds up to a lot.
Thousands here, thousands there.
You know, and well, and it's, it's, you know, just using a rough figure of ten percent for Harris Township. If they're in for another thirty-five, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of, um, of people, we're up, we're gonna find thirty-five thousand dollars in our budget. And we don't run a budget with a lot of surplus. We run a pretty tight budget. So, think about phasing and prioritizing. Miscellaneous comments all come from the manager.
I just had a couple. Um, I, there was mention made of getting some meeting software to help run the COG meetings. I, I don't, having stage managed the backend of one of the virtual meetings on regional parks in two thousand twenty-one, I'm not sure how complicated these meetings are that you need actual software. And I know what those software costs, so that was my concern with that.
Wait, for managing virtual meetings?
Managing the COG meetings. It's like agendas and everything else.
Oh, oh, okay.
Um, I, the managers have talked about this, um, and I've, I've made this known to Eric, but I really think that we should do another emergency exercise. We did one in two thousand twelve that got everybody together in the EOC, and when I say everybody, it was everybody, it was police, fire, CADA. We did one in 2012 that got everybody together in the EOC, and when I say everybody, it was everybody, it was police, fire, CADA, everybody. Not the elected officials, everybody that would be responding to a disaster. So I, we haven't done it in a long time, and I think we should do that again. I remain very concerned about the planning agency and the fact that our planners, the last planner standing, and I also think that's going to affect the comprehensive plan process, so I'd like to understand how that's going to work out. And I, I keep seeing in the program plan mention of going for grants, which I think is great, I, you know, we go for grants in the township. One of my thoughts, and this kind of plays into the fund balance thing that Frank just said, if agencies had fund balance or contingency money set aside so that if a grant came up mid-year that was perfect opportunity, they could then apply, and then they had the money as the match money, they didn't have to worry about going back and doing a budget amendment, just a thought there. And then I saw mention that the Parks Agency wants to do another study on indoor recreation facilities, and we lasted that right before, right after I got here. And now we have more private facilities, so I'm not sure why we need to do a whole new study, why can't we just update the one we have?
I didn't know there were, where did you say they're going to just study on?
It's, it's in the program plan.
Okay, well, there will be.
Okay, I'm not enthusiastic about Cog funding indoor recreation facilities. I think that's something that.
Indoor recreation.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's.
It seems, it's, it's a meeting that seems to be being met.
We, we had a major private addition that we, yeah.
Even though it, it's not cheap, it costs a lot of money to get.
Well, that's, that's fine, but we didn't build it.
I don't know, what, 300 bucks a kid or something?
Shall we, shall we let all those comments come through?
Sure.
Those being offered by our manager.
Yeah, you got to give her, let her out, let her out there, let her hang herself.
All right, good. Thanks, guys. I think we did a pretty good job. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
I told you we did all right. You did good.
Yeah.
I've been, I've been in, these meetings that last until, until midnight.
We're not that, we're not that township.
We're not college township.
We're not that end of town, no.
Okay.
See you then.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Okay, 2023 Cog Program Plan and Capital Improvement Program. Am I on the?
Next page.
No, I'm, I'm, we're moving on.
There you go.
Such a short item, I need to check it off. Okay, financial planning.
Okay, so at last month's meeting, the board discussed adding a fund balance policy, a structurally balanced budget policy, and a health insurance reserve policy to our financial toolbox. The board directed staff to set the fund balance policy at 10% of recurring expenditures. So I drafted a fund balance, structurally balanced budget, and a health insurance reserve policy. The fund balance and the structurally balanced budget are pretty standard stuff. The structurally balanced just says that you're going to balance your budget every year, and you're not going to eat into your reserves. The health insurance reserve fund policy, we have $170,000 sitting in our health insurance reserve right now. Um, so I was thinking that I, this policy would give me the ability that I could unassign some of that fund balance and pay it off towards the premium, because I think we pay about $270,000 a year for health insurance. Or we could use it for wellness programs, health reimbursement accounts, health savings accounts. Or we could also use it, we did this this year, we split, the employees pay, we pay 80% if they have to.
Sure, Frank.
They're dropping like flies.
He's still got another car.
He's still in a car.
So if an employee has more than coverage just for themselves, if they have a spouse or they have dependents, that employee pays 20% of the cost of the insurance. This year, we dropped it so that they're paying 15%, and we were paying the other 5% out of the health insurance reserve fund. We only have two employees that fall into this category, so I was proposing with that health insurance reserve policy that we can continue doing that and splitting with the employees. So I would love any comments or questions that you have on any of these policies.
I think we use our insurance number. I, I, I question 10%. Well, the need for 10% reserve, I'm not quite sure we need that much money, what would we use it for if we needed it. I would think more like 5% or 6% percent, but whatever everybody else wants.
Well, GFOA best practices is too much. Two months recurring expenditures, which is like 16.7%. So last month when we talked about it, we talked about stepping in, 10% is about $268,000 of your budget.
And what will we do with that? Why do we need to hold 250,000 dollars of other people's money, just never, never to spend it, just not dedicate to anything?
So we actually, as we discussed last month, we actually get all of our tax money in, in the second quarter of the year. It all starts coming in in March. We spend most of our money in the third quarter of the year, and then we eat our fund balance in the fourth, fourth quarter of the year and in the first quarter of the year. So you, if you don't have money to carry over, we can't pay our employees, we can't do our jobs.
What have we been doing so far?
We've been squeaking by, because we've had a lot of growth. So having a fund balance policy also guides us against, guards us against emergencies, like we had the storm in 2017.
I do agree in fund balance policy. I don't know that we need to hold $250,000 of taxpayers' money, just send a plot someplace in case we need it. A hundred thousand?
That's actually not what you said last month, though.
No, that's exactly what I said. I don't, I do agree in a fund bound policy, yes, I think we need to have a fund balance. We have to have reserve, let's put it this way, but I don't think our reserve needs to be more than $100,000.
Our neighbors.
What would we use it for?
Well, the idea is that we have that in reserve, and that if we have a big project come up, if we have a big snowstorm, if we have an unexpected expenditure, we've been being killed this month, this year by the inflation and supply chain.
$250,000, a pretty big snowstorm.
We spent $50,000 on the storm that we had on May 1st, 2017.
That's, that's, so a hundred thousand dollars would have covered it.
That we took that out of the capital reserve fund because we didn't have that.
So a hundred thousand dollars would have covered that.
Okay.
I'm just suggesting that, that I'm, I'm in favor of keeping some monies in reserve in case something comes up. $250,000 is unrealistic. We don't need, that's, a hundred thousand. We'll keep, if you want to hold some money.
A hundred thousand dollars wouldn't pay our bills in one month.
Quite over here, I'd say at most it'd be a hundred thousand dollars.
A hundred thousand dollars wouldn't pay our bills in the month of January.
Well, that, but see, here's the issue now, we're paying it now, we don't have any fund reserve. What's, what's the difference?
We're paying it now because we're carrying money over because we're growing.
There you go.
Can we see some numbers on that, how that goes in the period of time before our taxes come in?
In terms of?
Well, you're, you're, you're saying that we need to have money for that startup period of the year when we're spending money, but we don't have taxes coming in. Could you show us those numbers?
Yeah, Dwight and I can put something over for you.
Okay, I think that would be helpful.
Actually, I think we.
Can we get an independent person to do that?
Maybe do it for a couple of years.
I think actually we gave it to you last time, but we can give it to you over a couple of years. It's the fourth quarter and the first quarter of the year when we eat our fund balance.
Okay, I, I think that would be just useful to have that as we make that decision.
Okay, I, I may be confusing two separate things out now. A fund balance to carry us over for the year or a reserve fund? What are we talking about?
Both, it's the same thing.
Well, there you go. That, I'm not, now, I do understand we have to have monies to carry us over, but to hold a reserve fund of $250,000, I think is much more than we'd ever need. I'd say if we're going to, if we're going to have a checking account or a savings account, a hundred thousand dollars of other people's money would be reasonable. 250,000, that would not be a reasonable thing.
Show us the number.
Show me the numbers.
Okay, we can do that.
And we can investigate, I mean, we don't have to put it in a, in a coffee can, we can put it in something that earns interest.
Is there something?
Our mon, our money market account right now through the new bank is earning 1.5%.
So we're not, we're not ready to move on this yet, but we'd like, like a little more details, and we're agreed in principle.
Can we fight about it some more?
I'm fighting it all.
Okay.
Fine. Jerry.
Jerry.
Come sit down.
All right, where you been?
Okay, um, Contract 2208, Academy Street Rebid.
What? Oh, stop. Okay. The 2022 operating budget includes $60,000 to replace 317 linear feet of pipe and three inlets at the top of South Academy Street. If you remember, we initially opened bids for this project on April 1st. The lowest bid submitted was for $99,729.50 from EB Paving and Construction. After reviewing the bids, it became apparent the cost of the pipe was problematic and was driving a large increase in the project. The board rejected the bids at the April meeting, and then since that meeting, we actually purchased the pipe for the project at a total cost of $37,449.30. The project was also split with our public works crew installing the top third of the pipe. This section of the project will actually be paved by the contractor for Columbia Gas as part of the restoration work for the gas line that was installed in the area in the spring, and they have a request of the supervisors to be able to close that road while they do that paving. And then we rebid the lower section of the project. The bids were opened on August 3rd. The bids came in at $69,879 by EB Paving and Construction. So we didn't really realize the savings that I thought we were going to save. No.
Cost us more.
The price of the precast jumped up on both inlets.
Well, the 37,000 and the 69 is 107,000.
Yep.
So we rejected 99, but now we're paying 107.
Yeah, but the price of the precast jumped up, the inlets.
We should have taken 99. Water over the dam.
Remember that for next.
Water down the stream.
Remember that for next time.
Solid.
Well, that's something we got to do, right?
Well, I move that we accept a bid of EB Paving and Construction Company Incorporated for $69,879 for the Upper Academy Street Stormwater Project Rebid.
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
How, how long are these places good for? 30 days?
I believe we had them good for 45 days, and they're committed to committing, to finishing the project this year, so.
Come to you.
Yeah, they have to be done in October.
Prior to the paving plant shutting down, because there is a portion that requires paving.
Mid-October.
Yep, they're, they're going to move quick.
Okay. Anything further? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no?
And there is one other thing related to this, the top portion of the project that Columbia Gas is doing. They just need the supervisor's approval to close the top portion of Academy Street when they pave for a period of four hours, because they can't get two passes up there because the road is so narrow, they have to do it in one pass.
That sounds like a simple request, but do you think it's going to be?
It affects three houses and the, and the private portion.
It affects eight.
Eight houses.
You think it's going to be?
But when, we don't know when, though, right?
So my conversation with Columbia Gas is, get us a week's notice so we can do our email blast, and then hang a door knocker on everybody's house. They know roughly how long it's going to take to do their prep work, given their crew size, so. Weather being weather, and, you know, the truck getting here, traffic in Oak Hall from the plant. It's on them to pick their window, but at least give the residents an idea of when things are going to be gnarled up there.
Well, my question is, how can we approve the closing, and if we don't know when we're closing?
You can approve giving them the ability to close the road.
I will move that we approve the closing, giving the residents 48 hours' notice.
You're going to be on vacation that weekend?
No.
Any objections? Passed. I know Amy likes that.
Okay, thank you.
Mary Elizabeth Street Culvert Project Time Extension.
Yes, Larson Design Group, which is the engineering firm that's working on the design for the Culvert project, submitted a time extension to complete design and construction on the project. The extension is requested through November 9th, 2023. This is like our other problem project. The extension is necessary because we've had delays in receiving the signed easement from the Military Museum, which is holding up us applying for the permit from DEP. Additionally, there's an in-stream construction restriction in Spring Creek from October to June 1st, and we ordered our Culvert pipe, the insert, back in March, and they haven't fabricated it yet. So we're really hoping for better luck next year. The pipe was, the Culvert was inspected, and there were no changes. It's very stable at this point.
So we've kept Pendot happy and say we couldn't do it by December of last year.
Yeah.
They've accepted.
The Pendot seems to be fine. They signed off on all the, Pendot signed off on their side of the project. They signed off on everything that we've had to do with them in terms of the structure. We're just waiting to figure out why, it's supposed to be 10 weeks to fabricate the inside of the pipe, and we don't know why they haven't fabricated it yet.
What was annoying was the tone of the Pendot language in sitting down Mary Elizabeth, and, you know, if they had been more cooperative, we could have had a much more friendly project.
Yes.
No, it, I remember discussing and maybe putting a contingency on there, that there be a accessible path along there of either climbing back up onto the road, you walk down, back the path to the shrine, or is that in there anywhere, or what, what are we going to do about that?
It is not in there. We've just been focused on.
That'd be a museum project.
Yeah, we've just been focused on the structure itself and getting that.
Well, that wouldn't be a museum project, because it goes across and on past Culvert, over clear over towards Linden Hall.
What, you mean on the other side of Mary Elizabeth?
Well, I mean, for years, that's, that's a path they'd walk through there, and, and someone asked, what about walkers and bikers that could dive in or maybe sprawl? The, the park walked through there. I, I don't know. It seems to me we should make some accommodations. When it's all said and done, that they can continue without having to climb back up on a, 40, on a, whatever that is. Leonard Boulevard, walk all the way to the end back down. I don't know, I don't know. There's already a back path there, but there's also a lot of usage on the other side of that stream.
Sounds like a conversation for another day.
Well, it probably is, I, but I'm wondering, where, where does that conversation fit in?
That's a good conversation for your official map update.
Okay.
When is it, okay.
I can forward that on to them.
That needs to be fitted, that needs to be coordinated with this project, because it's probably some work to be done there.
Can I have a motion to approve the extension?
I'll move.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Please, no? Passed. Resolution?
Go ahead. Before I get off to Mary Elizabeth Street, something struck me the other day. We're paying $2,500 a day, or a month for that, for that.
Twenty-five hundred. $2,500 a month.
For that. Last check was a $3,200 elevator, but that's okay.
No, that was also for other stuff.
Anyway, we're paying for that light.
Yes.
Now, when are we getting our new things?
So.
Can we charge this company back that's the?
It's, the, we signed the, I, I went back and found all this. I signed the approval for the pole back in October, like, the accident was the middle of October. I signed the approval for the pole in October, like, a week later. We were told it would be six months to have the pole fabricated. Dave Claybaugh, who's our signal contractor from Tel Power, told me in July, because I get angry phone calls like every day on this, which I understand. And Dave Claybaugh, who's our signal contractor, said, oh, the company just called him, and this is the beginning of July, and said they'll have it in two weeks to us. And he said, I've got a crew ready to go, like, I'm ready to mobilize and put everything in, because I know you're getting hounded. And that was the beginning of July. And it is like this with everything, and it's not just this pole, it's everything. And because it's a specialized pole, we can't just go out and buy a pole off of a, you know, Lowe's somewhere. So we're kind of at the mercy of when that pole comes, and I'll bug him again to see if he has another update, because with school starting in two weeks, I'd really like this to be done before then.
Did we have insurance?
We do have insurance, and we have an open claim, and that's the other thing. Our insurance company keeps emailing me to find out if we're done so they can settle the claim, because they've reached out to the company and said, you know, the township's going to be $100,000 in for the repairs.
Trying to do that repair job with the school buses, morning and afternoon, that's going to be a tight afternoon schedule.
Yeah, it's a mess. It was, it was supposed to be done by Memorial Day. It's a mess.
All right, let's move on to 22-10, amended 2022 fee schedule.
I move to approve Mary Elizabeth 2210.
Second. We spent a lot of time on it. Anybody want to spend more time on this? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Oh, wait, you were, you were opposed?
Oh, God.
I said say no, or you just later objected.
What?
I almost missed that.
Okay. However, the secretary records that vote, good for me. Shade Tree Commission Windhook has resigned from the commission. Tim Demico?
D'Amico.
D'Amico. Rocky Ridge is interested in filling in Mr. Hawke's term.
Move the motion. Second.
Any objection?
Any objection? Pass without objection. You're getting us.
I like this, no objection.
You know what I, I love when you do that.
Request to close Harris Avenue for a block party. The resident, everyone wants to have a block party.
And I was told that we're all invited to this block party.
All right.
It's Sutherland, and he said you guys are all invited.
I didn't hear about that. I heard about that, yes.
So, a motion to approve Harris Avenue closure from Boltsburg Pike District Street on the 11th from 12 to 6. Second, anybody?
Second.
Okay. Any objections? Without objection?
I feel like that's going to be on my evaluation this year.
The state, the state comes after us, we'll, um. Okay, trick or treat night. Cog has agreed that we should schedule trick or treat night for Halloween, October 31st from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. With rain date on the November 1st, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m.
What day's the week out of those?
If it doesn't snow.
Uh, I'm going to have to look right now on my calendar.
Oh, you're looking at it?
If it doesn't snow.
That's what we get staff on.
Uh, October 31st is a Monday.
It's a Monday.
All right.
Oh, I, we moved it, didn't we?
Do we have a motion? I don't know.
I'll move it.
We didn't move it.
I'll move it.
Second. Without objection? Voting delegate to the Municipal League Annual Summit Volunteers.
I, I, I'm still, I'll probably be gone, so.
All right.
And Bud was his, his alternate last year.
I'm his alternate.
Oh, God.
Provided they don't get stuck in a door again.
Stuck in a swinging door.
I'll move, we appoint Frank Harden as delegate, and Bud Graham as the alternate to the relation, Resolutions Committee and the annual business meeting for the P A Municipal League Annual Summit. Second, anybody?
I'll second.
Yep. All right. Any objections?
Yes.
Without objection. So, passed. Managers report.
Um, I will just say that if you have any questions, I'll answer them, and that the plans for the open house are coming along nicely. The guys are making me clean the maintenance facility on Friday for them, so.
You come.
Chalk that up as to the things I do for my employees.
On number three, is there a, uh, idea to do a connection from Kwood to Oak Hall Park? Is that, did we ever include, include that on the map?
That was on before, but I don't think, that's the zoning map up there, but I don't think that we're gonna include it on the next. We talked about it, and we're still finalizing those connections, and I can't honestly remember where we fell down on that.
It has to be on the private side. You can't, you can't use the PennDOT side.
Using the same path that the beneficial use, use around their.
He didn't put the path in because he couldn't get the easements that he needed.
Oh, they couldn't get the easements.
Yeah, so I think that that's where we came down on. We decided not to put that path in from Kwood to Oak Hall because we're not sure that we could get it. We do show down from Kwood, and we've shown this before, going down, uh, the back piece of that farm there so that people could get to Linden Hall Road that way.
Down, down to the Linden Hall Road?
Yeah.
Through the, on that easement?
Yeah.
On the current easement?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, this, this is different, so, okay.
Well, we have discussion items.
Well, I was gonna say, we have the Brush Valley Road topic.
We do.
Yeah, so, I mean, you don't need to take any action, Denny. I can just talk with the police and let them know they need to do some enforcement out there and see if they can get the speed display units put up.
Well, Collins Township got the new li- white lines painted up.
Yeah, I mean, we can do that for them if they need it, but they can put the, they'll start as a first step. They'll put the speed display unit up, and then that counts the number of cars, and that'll give them a report as to when people are speeding out there.
Every speed and all this sort of stuff.
I'm, I'm seeing the chief in a couple days, so, okay.
Okay, I will talk to the police about that.
I, I have four items, three items, four items. Well, I'm like, it's getting late, but I wanna bring this up. We need to start discussion on, on three different things. Uh, one of them is, uh, landscaping in our planning modules. Uh, I know that, that it's been talked about, and we, yeah, we're gonna do it, but it's time we start doing this. Landscaping requirements for our developments. We need to start taking a look at it seriously. Uh, I don't know who, I guess we have Shade Tree Commissions involved in this, but we need to get talking on it, because it's, 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 the, the expense involved with doing it right now is, is, are humongous. Uh, the times, what, we spent eighty, ninety thousand dollars on landscaping, maybe more than that.
I don't know. The Shade Tree Commission did start reviewing those regulations in the spring, and they will continue in the fall. They sort of take them.
Well, okay.
And they've been going through.
On a timely manner, because right now, it is horrendous, the amount of landscaping you plan, you have to do, and, and it has to be mature, and it, it's just a very bad ordinance right now. Uh, another one is, we wanna start on sign illumination. Uh, I, I, we, we should've started this before. We've already got a situation now that probably wouldn't, the sign probably wouldn't have passed our new regu- illumination regulations if we had one, but I don't think we need to go planning commission on that. I think we can present ideas here on what we want on sign illumination, especially in our business district, since we are now have a commercial district and it's starting to grow. We're getting, we're getting some activity on down this end of the road. We don't, we wanna be able to control illumination. Okay. What I mean by that? Lights in the sky, lights everywhere. Keep lights down, focus down, keep the light down to minimum, but still allow businesses to, to advertise their properties, which I think we can do that. I think we can do that. I'll, I'll bring up some.
There should be model, there should be models elsewhere.
There's, yeah, there's model ordinances, and the Supreme Court made some changes that we have to take into account.
I'm wording, I'm wording, huh?
Yes, and, yeah, I, I have all of that to sit down and talk with the solicitor about.
Okay. The other, the other thing is, I'd like to start some discussion on permitting for, uh, events that, that have artisans that, like, uh, what come to mind would be Tussie Mountain. What come to mind would be Lintley Valley Water. When they have, when they have vendors or artists there, we, we, I'd like to say a special, how we handle those differently. So that's, those are things we need to discuss.
You'd like to look at our special events ordinance?
Well, I've seen our special event. We voted on it.
No.
But, no, this is not a special event. This is any event. Doesn't have to be, doesn't have to fall under the category of special event. Special event is triggered with how many people?
Five hundred.
Five hundred. And maybe it could be less than that, but it can be a sponsored event. It can be ten, fifteen, thirty people, or two, or. If, if it reaches the level of five hundred, then they have to apply for special event, but it's how, how the, the vendors or the tent people or artisans are handled. Now, we, now, I know that it's all over the board, all across, but I gotta tell you, there was a comment about the State College Borough, and they made a special exemption to their, they did not charge those people a fee, a rental fee to rent to be at the Sparks Festival. So, we need to work something out.
Yeah, that's not what their ordinance says.
Yeah. But I know it's not what your ordinance said. Okay. Those three things we need to discuss, I'm gonna bring them up, and I'll keep bringing them up when we have time. I will bring, bring back some eliminations, suggestions or something, because I think we can handle that without going anywhere.
I do have Ferguson's ordinance. I got that last year.
Okay, good. And the, the street license, okay, yeah, okay. Okay. Those are my discussion items.
All right. Um, let's move on to the approval of vouchers.
So moved, sir, at two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars and fifty-six sets.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, no? Passes. Um, committee reports. Okay, I'll start off. The Executive Committee met. Parks Capital Committee did not meet. Parks Governance Committee is grinding along. Um, I, I asked them to, let's put on the table, as we keep, we keep going around and around and around about what the authority should or shouldn't be doing, and we need to also include in this discussion the rest of Parks Governance, particularly Facilities Finance and the Parks Capital Committee. My own opinion, I welcome your input, because Parks Capital Committee probably needs to disappear. Park Authority is basically focusing right now on planning for, um, the Whitehall Road. I don't know, sorry, not the Whitehall Road. Well, planning Whitehall Road, but primarily on looking at Hess Field, and, uh, basically Hess Field and Oak Hall, and how that needs to be phased in. If we take lights, if we take Hess Field offline for a period of time to rebuild it, we need to make sure that we have adequate lighting on Oak Hall in that interim period. And then the other aspect has been the discussion of three fields versus four fields. Four fields is more fields, but there's smaller fields that are only available for youth softball. Three fields are larger fields. They can be used for both for adult softball and with temporary fences for youth softball. And the outfield's can be used for rectangular sports activities in the off season.
There was a goal to expand Hess Field into what is now owned by the Meyer family, and the, but no way to approach the Meyer family about giving that, letting that.
Things, things have changed there, so. Things have changed.
Things have changed. We may, maybe need to approach that family and say, can we, that would give us four good fields, okay.
Okay. And, uh, and again, I continue to emphasize bathrooms.
Well.
Session facilities.
I don't know what the, uh.
I just, to me, that's more important than the number of fields.
Yes, that, Hess Field's our oldest, one of our oldest softball facilities, and we're the least, and we're the least taken care of.
Well, and it's been, all right, they got the deal.
Yeah, I play ball there.
Yeah, and the, um, so I guess, you know, in addition, nah, that's enough. There's always something, there's always something else. Uh, MPO.
MPO did not meet, but we do have a Bill Committee this, on the eleventh, which will be Thursday, which, that's the one we're talking about with all the new, the bipartisan infrastructure legislation. Uh, Facilities Committee did not meet. The State College Area Connector Pell Study. Well, the twenty-fourth is our ASM meeting, and it will be on that particular one ASM.
August twenty-fourth?
August twenty, but it's a, it's a virtual meeting. It's with PennDOT official.
Oh, that's the one you can never get on.
I know. It's one I have a hard time getting on. Anyway, um, we're supposed to see that draft two weeks before that meeting, which will be Wednesday. Uh, I'm not optimistic. I have not heard anything. I have not gotten anything from them. But we are supposed to see that two weeks before, that, this is the one we talked about last month, of maybe getting together an executive session to discuss. Uh, but right now, unless something changes.
We need to see it before general public sees it.
That's right. This is, would be our chance to say something before the public gets it. But this would be, again, the tenth is two weeks ahead, which is, what, Wednesday? Wednesday's the tenth, or tomorrow's, tomorrow's the tenth?
Everybody talked to Dunbar, and it's exactly where the register going, and it's always a different situation.
I know. A- a- again, we're supposed to see it, but I'm not optimistic, so we'll see it on Wednesday. Uh, Public Safety Committee, uh, did not meet. I'm done.
All right. Um, Facilities PL, Public Safety, Human Resources.
Okay, HR met last Wednesday. Um, we, uh, we approved budgets for the Employee Relations Committee, um, for next year, and the Employee Wellness Program Budget as well. Um, a prove, we also approved a job description for an HR administrator, which has already been, uh, uh, approved in the budget, um, for, uh, ahead of time, and, uh, we did get the, um, an update from, uh, let's see, Ms. Joellen Katamatory of Gov HR about the progress on the wage and benefits survey. She gave us a list of communities that they've come up with to, uh, that they're gonna be, uh, looking into to, uh, for comparisons, and that's it.
Okay, um, I attended the Lucy meeting. Uh, the Lucy meeting, um, concentrated on workforce housing. Excellent presentation. Uh, there's some problems with the data in that, uh, student housing is not clearly identified, and when the census comes through, and we finally get the two thousand twenty census coming through, it's gonna be problematic because students were not here during the period of time during that census.
I can't tell you how many, I, I was working apartments, how many, they come knocking, nobody's here. They, hundreds of, we knock, they leave these things for them to fill out. Nobody ever filled them out. I don't know how they ever got back their census on that. I have no idea.
Um, I made some comments about, I think that with all the new student housing that's gone in, and we could probably identify those people as being students. There, there is some old housing in town that's no longer attractive to students. I'm thinking West College Avenue, old Doc Sun buildings.
I don't know.
That could be, perhaps could be repurposed, rezoned, incentivized, and they make it.
Well, students love those, but you're right, it could be.
But they're all moving to million-dollar.
That, that's, that isn't, that, that's not a true coup. It, it, it's, all of that. Okay, they, okay, yeah.
Some comment, you know, this is a transportation issue as much as a, um, as anything else.
Yeah.
Uh, it's not a, simply a center region issue. It's a center county issue. And I guess, yeah, um, uh, fin- finally, you know, it's, it's, the, the study that they presented us was heavily based upon an analysis of the supply of housing, and they did not have a lot of information on the demand for housing, and what, and we need to get more information about what people want and where they want it, rather than just focusing on the number of housing units. So that was, that was my meeting. Uh, solar power purchasing.
We did not meet, but we are coming down to the sixty-day window for, uh, awaiting a decision by Belle Fontborough and Belle Fonton Water to, uh, to join the group, so. And that'll be coming, uh, within about ten days.
Hey, finance?
We will not meet until the eighteenth, and we will discuss exactly what we discussed tonight.
Climate Action Sustainability.
I've attended that meet today at noon. Uh, two things about that is that, uh, we had a presentation from someone from Lancaster, but, and so we voted to forward on to the general forum that we join, and I, I give you the exact, uh, where's it at here? Anyhow, it's a, it is a solar, or, I'm sorry, so it is a, darn, I had it right here, and I lost it. It is, oh, here it is. We, we joined to become a member of the Pennsylvania Clean Energy Website, which is, is, it is an information website, a resource head website. It's several municipalities across Pennsylvania. We're gonna join them simply for information only and no money involved. Uh, if we wanna add something to it, or we wanna look up something, it's, it's a website that anybody can look at it. It, it's, it's just information only. We're enjoying that. It's just something else to do. Uh, one thing I did, I did clarify, uh, now this, and I didn't know I was on this committee till today or yesterday, that I am on the Regional Refugees and Recycling Contract Schedule Committee.
Yes. No, sorry, I love that. That's my favorite.
Well, I, I questioned how that came to our committee, and I guess it morphed, morphed from some other committee. This seemed to be where it fit. So we are gonna handle, the Climate Action Committee is now gonna handle the Regional Refugees and Recycling Contract for two thousand and seventy-five.
That was a squish when we started the new committee.
What's that?
That happened when we started the new committee, Bud.
Yeah, probably, that's what they explained to me, that it did better on our committee, I guess.
Well, I advocated for keeping it the way it was, but.
It was news to me. And then, but that also means that we're, this committee will be handling the refuge contract.
Well, I'm more working on a contract, too.
Hey, hey Bud, I am very happy to help with that contract. I helped the last time. It's like the cable thing. I like doing that.
Good, and you, you probably can read it then?
Yes.
Okay, excellent, excellent.
Send it to me.
You read it, and we'll get in an argument over it.
Heritage Museum?
And that's it.
Heritage Museum.
Oh, Heritage Museum, yes. September, and I forget the exact date, uh, we're having Oktoberfest at Dr. Nydigger's Farm across from Denny's, down from Denny.
Up and down.
Up and, up on the side, up on the side of the mountain.
Jeff and Emre modeled.
It is, huh?
Is that the one Jeff and Emre modeled?
Yes, yes. And it will, it'll be up in the field, and it will be little German band type thing, and food booths and the whole bit. Have a good time. It'll be our fundraiser. Uh, I, I believe September fifteenth was the word, but we'll get word out for that. Uh, plenty of parking, I think, up there.
If you haven't been up that driveway.
We met them. You have to go this way.
Prepare yourself.
Well, there might be some rocks you may wanna go around.